Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 9th, 2022. This is a meeting of the Gloucester School Committee. I will say that the mission for Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful and engage lifelong learners. We are going into an executive session for the purpose of pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining with the SBC, known supervisors and crossing guards, and we will return to open session at approximately 7:00 PM. So anybody who may have joined us at 6:30, we will be back at this place at 7:00 PM. Someone want to make a motion to go into executive session?
I don't want to.
Second.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Ms. Dexter, Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Mayor Verga?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Miesen?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
And Ms. Melman?
Yes.
Good evening again, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 9th, 2022. We are now continuing our school committee meeting. Can you turn off these speakers? Are we good? We all good? Okay. So we're continuing our meeting in the, in open session. Consistent with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be conducted by remote participation. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and listen to the meeting in real time and participate when necessary. If you are calling it on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options through the oral communications to be recognized to speak. Now I'll say that again, the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engage lifelong learners. We will all hopefully join me to stand up and speak. So... Oral communications is the next item of business, and I just want to say we will be getting a presentation, a report from superintendent on the new information from Department of Elementary and Secondary Education during the superintendent's report. So we will hold public comment on that topic until after that presentation, hoping that anybody who has questions or comments will take that information into account, into what they may comment. If they have questions, maybe those questions get answered for them prior to, during this public comment session. So that being said, is there anybody who wants to speak on a topic other than masks required in our school? You would need to raise your hand, and I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand. Okay, but we have a lot of attendees. Thank you for joining us this evening. We definitely have many people watching our meeting tonight. Next item of business is recognition. Does anybody have... Okay, Laura?
I want to recognize Laura Lapianta, the head, founder and head of Backfire Throwers, who announced that she was retiring. She and her organization have brought incredible wealth of activities and information and support for our students and for the whole community, and I want to really recognize her and back her.
I just want to recognize the swim teams at the high school. I know they've had some recent successes. You know, a newer program that continues to grow, and we should be very proud. I think a couple of years ago, two years, more than a couple, but swim and wrestling and girls ice hockey, those programs have really blossomed. And they're doing well, and I'm sure the kids are all really happy that they can participate in those programs. Okay. Next, we have our Gloucester High School Student Advisory Council, and we have Jenna Smith with us this evening. Thank you, Jenna, for coming.
Can you guys be married? Yeah.
If you could hear you a bit better, if you could speak a little louder, that'd be great.
All right, perfect. Is that a little better? Okay, get comfortable, because like I have a lot of things to share with you guys. So if you want to go grab some popcorn or something, that'll be a long way. First off, I do want to apologize because the exec board hasn't been here for a bit. Life of the seniors getting a little crazy with college apps and sports and work and all that. But hopefully we'll be back more regularly now, so that'll be good. So NHS induction for new inductees is next month on March 21st. With all like the really bad weather that we've been having, the current members of NHS, they've been doing really good getting in their community service hours because they've been able to like shovel and just help out their neighbors and stuff, which has been great. Valentine's Day is next week. We all know that. The junior class is selling candy grams, and they've been selling them just like little bags of candy. I think you can get one for, like a small bag for $1 or a big bag for $5. They're doing pretty well on that. There is a big DECA competition coming up too. And unfortunately for the DECA students that are going to that competition, it's very expensive. So they're trying to organize some fundraisers. They're gonna try and get an Azerian night soon. So they watch out for that because that'd be great to help them out so that they can go and stay in a hotel and all that fun stuff. For the yearbook, they're also fundraising. They have a budget that they have to meet in order to produce the book. And I'm in the yearbook staff, and it's actually coming along really great, but we still need to sell those books. So if you know any students at GHS, promote the yearbook and tell them to buy the books. But in addition to that, we're gonna have a night at Minglewood, and we're gonna hopefully host that next week. So stay tuned for that too. What else do we have? Oh, last week we took Suppralive pictures for the yearbook, and we have a contract, and we have to use Prestige as our photographer in like all the pictures. And the photographer had a mix-up, so they weren't able to come the day and time that they were scheduled to. And it was really great because the students had like worked together and like Kiara O'Connor, I don't know if you guys know her. She, um, she took photo as one of her classes at the school, and she was able to take all the pictures, and they turned out amazing. And so that's really great, and like the whole yearbook staff worked together really well for that. Next week is secret pal week. So everyone on student council and NHS, they're assigned one or two teachers. And every day for the week, they get to bring them like a little gift or like do a favor for them. And the teacher doesn't know who it is until the very, like next Friday, when like we reveal like, hey, like, I'm your secret pal. Like throughout the week, like you can give little hints. So like for my, I have two teachers. So for them, I'll be like, I'm a girl, I'm a senior, I do these extracurricular activities or something like that. So that's always a fun thing to do. And then Footloose is our musical this spring. I wish I could tell you guys like the date of like when like the debut is. I really don't know, but I have seen them rehearsing in the auditorium, and it looks and sounds great. So stay up with that because I know that I'm gonna be buying tickets right away, and I think that you guys all should too because they're working really hard. And then finally, um... I love secret pals. Sorry, I just want to say that again. I love them. They're so fun. I know Ms. Menery loves them. All the teachers love them. They're so fun to do. And soccer, not soccer, soccer already happened, hockey game this Saturday. There's a hockey game at O'Malley, and I think we should all go and support the hockey team because those are always really fun games. That's all I have for you guys.
Anyone have any questions? Jenna, I have a question. You mentioned that the National Society students are helping with some shoveling. How do people, how do you know who could use some help, or how do you, how do you connect people with people that have a need?
Right now, people have kind of just been like helping out people that they know. But if someone needs help shoveling, they could always reach out to either... I know Sophia Costa is the president of NHS, so you could reach out to her, or just any student in the high school. Like if someone needs help, reach out to the student in the high school, have them contact an NHS member because most people know who's on NHS and who isn't. If they don't know, there's a big poster board on the first floor near the stairs. Like you can look and like the names are posted, but it's kind of just like communicate to people who you know. And we can always find a way to help out people who need help shoveling.
Thank you.
Jenna, when is the Azerian night for the deaf and deaf team? Any idea on that?
I don't have a set date yet, but I know that they're trying to do it as soon as possible. They don't have a set date, so they're probably gonna be posting on social media and getting the word out as soon as they're able to finalize the date.
Thank you.
If you want to, if somebody wants to send that information to the school committee, we can post it on our Facebook page as well, and then as members, it would be great to know the dates. All right. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you. Good night. All right, so we will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items anybody would like to remove from the consent agenda? And was it approved, the consent agenda? All right. Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Mayor Verga?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Miesen?
Yes.
Chairperson Clancy?
Yes.
And Mr. Melman?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. So we are moving on to deliberations on educational issues. And we are sticking with the order of our agenda because we have a wonderful report from our special education director who joined us this summer, Katie Provo, and we're excited to hear about your view of what's going on in special education and the information you have to present. And you have a very full audience, and thankfully a lot of families will be able to hear what we're doing in special education as well.
Great. Thank you very much.
Before Katie goes, if you don't mind me to say a couple of things. I'm excited that you are to, for Director of Special Education Katie Provo to be here tonight to help us understand what she's been learning from all of our, specifically the staff and our teachers and school leaders. And also it sort of identifies some priorities. First, and just really, really pleased, you know, about the decision that the hiring committee made in hiring Katie. Katie brings to us a bunch of real strengths. First, she has a really deep understanding of high-quality special education practices and instruction. She matches that with a really deep understanding of laws and regulation, which, which, you know, guide and really sort of, you know, sort of give us the guide rails on special education. It's an area that is very heavily regulated and legalized. And so to have her combination of both instructional knowledge and practice knowledge, as well as the regulations and laws, is very, very powerful. She also brings to it a really deep and abiding interest in understanding data, where data is telling us about our students and matching that with classroom practice. And then the final, I guess, two more things going on. A really great sense of collaboration between the special education and general education, which is very powerful. You'll hear a lot about that tonight, as well as just a very collaborative spirit as well. So really pleased that Katie's with us, really pleased with the direction she's got to be leading us, and that's what we're talking about today. I will do the presentation. I will, I will reflect.
Okay.
You have a moment to get this set up, and then we'll go.
Thank you for that introduction, guys. I'm very happy to be here. So welcome, everybody. Thank you for having me. My goal tonight is to give you an update from the department with really kind of my vision of where I see the department going, what the priorities are, and what our strengths are in the department. And then reviewing some data. So some things that I've learned since I started, and as well as some data that we've been looking at really to help drive where our priorities are going. And then from there, we'll go into what the priorities are for the strategic plan of going forward. Okay, so my vision. So this is long. I won't read it to you, but I will just kind of synthesize. What I, what I really am passionate about is I'm extremely passionate about students with disabilities learning alongside their peers in high-quality educational settings that's inclusive, diverse, really meets students where they are, celebrates their strengths and their unique abilities, and provides ongoing identification of where the barriers are to remove those barriers in order for them to be their best selves, in order for them to feel proud of their accomplishments and really help drive where they can go in the future. I think it's really important that we, that we ensure that we're individualizing as we, as we support the students and helping them feel so they're part of the community, whether educationally, socially, emotionally, academically. Oh, and I forgot my quote, but I'll say it now. It's on the next page too. So really what kind of pulls it all together is that children that learn together learn to live together. And I really see that as the key for, for our students with disabilities and our peers and their peers to have that strong understanding of each other. So embedded in the vision are the following principles. All students are general education students first, and we need to focus on their strengths. General education and special ed must work together. We need to collaborate and learn to support our students and use the knowledge of all. Ensure a new cycle of improvement and move beyond compliance. Compliance is key, but we want to move beyond compliance. We wanted to even move with that. We make our best decisions when using data and classroom experience, and you'll see through my presentation that I love looking at data. And that family engagement matters. So really welcoming family and student partnerships and working with families, helping them to understand what their children's needs are and how to best support them. It's the department priorities that I'll go into a little bit later, the main bullets, but I'm gonna talk about some data that led us to these priorities first. So special education strengths. This is something that I was able to recognize as soon as I was done with my first interview. And then it just kept building and getting stronger from there. We, this community is so collaborative and has a strong culture, and our staff have that as well. It's so clear to me, seeing that our staff really, really care about students, they care about each other, and they want to do what's best for the students. So that is first and foremost, and the really most powerful thing that I've noticed in the community. We have a strong collaborative culture. Our teachers, our educators, our professionals, they're dedicated to their work, and they really want to learn more to, in order to support the students. And district-wide programs. So we do have a number of really well-established district-wide programs that helps to support the needs of students and keep them within our community and within theirs. Now, our first page of data is another strength that we have. So I thought, I think this is pretty powerful data to look at. It is the trend from 2016 to 2022 in really looking at what is the percentage of students in Gloucester that are in full-inclusive environments. So full inclusion, meaning that they're in the general education classroom or setting more than 80% of the time. When you look at our data since 2016, we have gradually been increasing with our percentages. So in 2016, we were at 73%, now in 2022, we're at 76%, which is slightly less than last year. But when you look at it compared to the state average below, which that is the state average of this, of 20, 2021, 2022. So that's 66.9%. So we are, we have been above the state average, and we continue to be above the state average. So we have strong inclusion population. We have a lot of students that are in, in our general education classrooms. The other important data, data to look at on this is the substantially separate programs. And you can see that in 2016, they were higher than they are now, and we've consistently been going down with having kids and students in substantially separate programs. And also compared to the state, we have been lower than the state. So those are two really good, strong things for foundation, along with the culture that we have. Okay, um, so a little more into the data. This is really the percentages of students identified with disabilities. And there's a lot of information on here, but the columns on the left are local area districts. The columns on the right are districts with similar student demographics. So you can see when we compare ourselves to both local and demographic, similar demographic districts, we have a very, very high percentage of students that are identified with disabilities. We are at the highest. So part of looking at the data is trying to determine where do we need to go from here? Where are the areas? So looking into what are the areas that we're, we're high in disability categories? Any questions?
I'm just having a think. In terms of just kind of why these districts? So these are districts that we are, we are now regularly using for any comparisons. It used to be in the past, and school districts often sort of think random districts based on whatever they're trying to show you, whether they can grab. So we have two groups of districts. One is our local area districts. You see on the left, everyone recognizes those. On the right-hand side are what we call DART districts. They're districts that the Department of Education identifies for every district, your, your most similar or most alike districts. It includes demographic data, ability to pay, if you have student enrollment, different level of disability, sort of thing. So it's the sort of the group of districts that doesn't, that aren't that is most like ours in terms of underlying data. These are the two sets that we'll continue to use, whether we show you various comparisons or special education comparisons or, or learning comparison, that sort of thing. So want to understand of why these two groups.
I have some questions. So we're talking right now about how our statistics are a little bit higher. I look at this rate. I haven't been on the committee for a long time. I look at this rate, and it's not surprising to me because we've always teed it around 22, 21, 23, so 25 isn't that surprising. But I can't help but wonder, because I know the feedback that I've gotten over the years is that we always had a really good compassionate specialized program here. And that parents are successful getting services without having to have an educational advocate. And I know there are some, but the, the reputation of this community, from what I hear, has always been very positive when it comes to specialized. And I can't help but wonder, and this is why I want to draw on your experience. Do you think our numbers are a little bit higher because we're identifying more students, because we're more open to identifying students as opposed to looking at it as a budget impact? Where I know other schools, it's a difficulty to get some services sometimes. So I'm wondering if you have any experience or if you could answer that, or if you think we're just higher specialized population here?
I think that's a really good question, and I don't necessarily have all the answers today because I've been learning a lot about the district, and I can see exactly what you're saying, that we have very compassionate teachers and educators that want to support our kids. And by wanting to support our students, if the thought is that special education is going to be able to support and fix things then, or get, provide supports and help that the students need. In my experience, I've seen that when RTI is really, or multi-tiered systems of support for social, emotional learning for academics, when those are really strong and in place and consistent across the schools, oftentimes your students with disabilities don't necessarily qualify for special education services because they're making effective progress, and they don't need something different in order to make that progress. So that's where I see, um, the percentages are high, and I think we're identifying students with disabilities. But how are we supporting them in order for them not to need something different? Oops. Thanks. Does that make sense?
It does, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I think you're gonna see when I get through the presentation a little more, when we look at the disability categories, which areas we're high in and what we need to target.
Okay, thank you so much.
Through the chair. Thank you. Mine's more of a technical question. When I look at the numbers, at this chart on the enrollment, the chart on the right, I mean, Ben kind of explained, hey, there's a lot of factors that go into this. But the discrepancy in the number of students, some of those, like I'm looking at Westfield, 4,900 or something. Does, is, are we comparing apples to apples? I mean, they have that many students, but they've taken so many of these factors into it that they come out with.
Yeah, in many ways, it's a, it's a better apple-apples comparison than the ones on the left, honestly. Because they really include ability, you know, the funding of that district, the demographics and socioeconomic situation with districts. I'd say they're identical in Gloucester, because these are different sized places. But as you know, as everyone knows, the ones on the left are wildly different in terms of size, you know, ethnicity, makeup, demographics, socioeconomic. So maybe it was that right-hand, right-hand column, and that's the purpose of it.
Yeah.
Is to give us some really good comparisons beyond just looking for close five.
Thank you.
Following that. So I know we take great pride having programs within our district instead of having kids go to private placements and other programs. Is there any way to know what our percent, is that later in the presentation?
It's not, but that's another question that I have. Yep.
You know, if, if we're high because we keep kids here with their families, with their peers, learning and serving them versus easily, you know, having them go to an outplacement, then this number is, is good thing, no bad thing. So it'd be nice to know what.
So I'm, I'm able to get into a little bit of that in the presentation. We'll see a little bit of that. That won't be. Yes. This is just another visual representation in order to look at the data. But it also includes the percentage of students that are placed out of district. So you can see we are on the far left, and you can see that while we're the highest, just like you were just saying, we do have a smaller number of students that we're placing out of district in comparison to the others.
First, they're told, the, the outage placement is included in the 25% number.
Right, okay.
Not additions.
Okay.
But within that, that 25%, you see, and Kate pointed out that our, our numbers are actually quite low, quite low. And that, I think, is a little strength. Uh, you know, because we do want our folks to be educated, you know, as much as possible, close to home, you know, in the neighborhood schools.
And this data right here that we're looking at is 2021. So it's, it's not this year, it's last year's data. But there is some data on this year a little bit. Um, so looking a little further into the percentages of students with disabilities and their placement kind of across the grade levels, you can see in the far-left column, I highlighted the percentages and how they seem to get higher when we get to eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th grade. So those percentages are much higher than, than what you would want to see. Want to see that we're able to be providing the supports, closing gaps, and students are coming home and by UPs and meeting the expectation. Question?
Quick question through the chair.
Go ahead.
Katie, uh, it's one of the things that I think is interesting and important is that kids are identified as potential needing extra services at an earlier age. I mean, and do you feel like we, we do a good job of kind of capturing or identifying those kids in the, in the early age? Or the kind of the graph shows, well, yeah, we see an increase when they get up to the higher grades maybe. Is that because we haven't bought them at an earlier age, or is that just because?
So another great question that I don't necessarily have the answer to yet. I think when we look at this and it's highlighted because it really leads us to asking more or less. I think when we look at this and it's highlighted because it really leads us to asking more questions. And often data does that. There could be, there could be reasons, it could be because of what you're saying, that they're not necessarily getting the services earlier. It could be that we have a number of move-ins at that grade level. So we need to dig deeper and really look at why and and help that to guide us going forward. The other.
The the crucial piece here is that is that this is what we're, what Katie and her team are uncovering and then noticing, noticing that is to go the next steps, which is what you're describing, which is, yeah. What's what's behind this, you know, why is that? So that's what Katie's, no, not not interest yet, but but that's what we're on the path. And some of the work that she'll talk about later is helping us to figure some of the answers out.
And the ball tonight is not for us to give you questions.
No, it's, it's great. No, it's great. And then you can see similarly, the students that are in substantially separate placements within the district gets higher as they as they get older. We hit high school and that's when the there is a drastic increase. So we need to dig into that and look at that more in depth, too.
Can I just have a little question on that? Would, um, like the gap be considered substantially separate?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, yes, it would.
Good question. So that's maybe some reflection there.
For the anchor program that we have at the.
Is considered.
Is considered substantially separate as well.
Can you give other examples of, of saying, um, at O'Malley, you know, and?
Yes.
Yeah. It's substantially separate that are in district was substantially separate.
Um, so currently within the district, we have at starting younger levels, at West Parish, we have some substantially separate classrooms for students with autism, which we are looking to develop a name for that program so that we have with an acronym that it really has some meaning behind it. And we have that program that goes through O'Malley as well and then the high school as well. At those are the, those, that's the program that's primarily substantially separate. The student support centers at the elementary school, most of those students, they're all full inclusion. And then O'Malley is full inclusion as well. So then when we get to the high school, oftentimes, like you were saying, they end up, they go to anchor, which is a program that has four core teachers that follow the students throughout, across their four years so that they really get to know those students and support them and build trust with them in order to maximize.
And that's how.
That's how it's in the high school. And then on top of that, we have the gap, which is the bolster alternative program for students that need more of a modified day, might be doing some work outside of the school day or within the school day while also getting their school work done. So there's a lot of social emotional programs at the high school level. And that that is, I think, why people are so high.
Those four teachers you mentioned, the the four teachers for the four grades, is there like one teacher for each grade or is it just four teachers that work with each student?
Yes, no, I believe it's four teachers that are with the students for the four years.
Okay.
But I don't know how that works schedule-wise.
Yeah, yeah.
But they're content teachers. So each and the one teacher, so that's how.
Yeah, it makes sense.
So one will teach math to the four grades, one will teach science, one will teach. So that's, that's how that works. It's really successful. Okay, um, so then we look into a little more into what are the most common disability types? So we have the high percentage that we that we see and we look at what are the most common, first most common, second most common, and third most common for disability types? And how do we compare to other districts? So you can see on the data, LD stands for learning disability. So those are your students that are diagnosed with dyslexia, dysgraphia, reading, writing, math disabilities. We have, when we look at ours, we have learning disabilities are the highest. But the second, the second highest is health. So when we look at the health category, that is often where students that are diagnosed with ADHD, attention difficulties, will be classified under health. And then emotional impairment, anxiety, depression, behavioral regulation, difficulties with that. But interestingly, when you look at the data is we are, we do have similar trends to Ipswich and Rockport. And those are really the only two districts that have the same top three.
And our dark districts, so our dark districts have no emotional?
Not in their top three.
So you said something to start with when we were in the principles, just about how then these three are the ones where you really direct our work.
Thank you. So when this really helps to guide where do we need to go? So if these are our top three disability categories, then this is where we need to do work. This is where we really need to support students and develop curriculums and methodologies and and provide resources to teachers in order to really support with with these areas. And you'll see that in strategic plan, in the planning going forward. All right, so high graphs. Now, lots of colors on here. Um, so this is back in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen. So I wanted to look and see what did our disability categories look like six years ago compared to what do they look like now? And how did we compare to the state? So the three on the left is Gloucester and the the green and blues on the bottom there, those are our top three, learning disabilities, health, and emotional impairment. And you can see compared to state, that is a a large chunk of the pie for the state as well. But ours is a little bit bigger. So very similar in in comparisons when you look at it with this way. But then below, you can see the specific percentages where we are higher with the emotional impairment disabilities categories of fifteen percent versus nine. And then this is today. This is this year as of October first, this is what the data looked like. So again, these three areas, the health and the emotional are getting bigger. They're they're growing. So how do we target and support these students? How do we help with the social emotional learning and building the strategies and supports for students that they need in order to be able to attend and be able to? A lot of the health and attention is difficulties with executive functioning, organization. We have a lot of students that struggle with that right now. But you can see on here, it's similar trend. So we haven't, there hasn't been any other than those those two pieces of the pie that are getting bigger. Any questions on this?
Or go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, can you just tell me what the communication one is? Because that's also quite large here.
Yep.
What would that be?
So communication, speech and language, students that have either articulation or expressive and receptive language disabilities. And we see that often in our younger students. It's often a precursor to the learning of disability in the area of reading as well.
Because it looks like that's actually higher now than emotional for us. So that would be just in the top three.
Yes, so this is this year's data.
Okay.
Yep. Whereas previously, this is, this is, um, this is last year's data.
Okay. Our autism population has grown quite a bit, too.
It has.
Is that reflective of, like, at which point did we start our substantial program in that West Parish?
I don't know the answer to that.
It was in existence before we built West Parish. For a while. It was in existence before we built West Parish because we moved them to West Parish.
But was it always only at West Parish?
No, it was down to West Parish when we built the school.
So was it at a couple of different schools?
Was it at Vets? I think it was at Vets or Fuller.
It was definitely at Fuller when I was there, but.
Yeah.
I guess I'm sort of wondering.
Vets has the K one. And then, you know, second, third, fourth, and fifth is at West Parish. So I believe it might have been.
I think when it went to Vets and when it went to Veterans, I think it was all at Fuller. And then, I don't know, doesn't matter.
I guess I'm just sort of back to our original, your original point, Melissa, about like the reputation, right? As it, when we switched over to the new, to to the new building, if we've seen numbers increase just because of reputation.
Hmm, does it, does that make sense?
Yeah, hopefully you can answer that.
I don't know that I know the answer to that, but I know that that, I don't think that would.
No, autism numbers are just going up.
Yeah.
The larger school, wherever it is, and you know, you see here, I mean, you see the state as well. You know, and and it's just, it's actually, it's a phenomenon in the sense that no one's really quite understanding yet why, but it's such a difference than five, ten, fifteen, twenty years ago.
But certainly, some districts, you know, support that population better. And those districts often get reputation as such. Right?
Yeah, that, it's interesting. There's, there's always in 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 districts, there's that conversation.
Yeah.
Are we or are they getting more, so are people moving there because of their reputation? And that's sort of, you hear that anecdotally.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's been quite hard to actually get defined data to prove that. But but people have the sense of that.
Yeah.
In fact, so far, uh, in the district I've worked in, um, as in, you know, everyone said that itself so far. I would say, no, not not Gloucester, you know, so it just, it it always comes up, you know?
Yeah.
But it's harder to really know for sure.
Or if it's just numbers.
Yeah, right, exactly, right, right.
I think there is, what does come out of that is that there are some families that move to district where students with autism are more included and not in substantially separate.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
And so I think that is where, and and that's where I'd really love to see our students more included in the life of the school socially, as a community. I think West Parish does a really mixed job of it. But just continuing to. So we looked at the data and this really helps to guide where do we want to go? What do we need to focus on? So looking at the high percentage of students with disabilities, we really need to take a closer look at our evaluation eligibility. How are we supporting with identifying students with disabilities? Do we have a high functioning process for evaluating and assessing students? What tools are we using to assess them? We'd really like to move forward and hone really more in on the special education evaluation and referral process. So examine the current model structure that we have and how are we allocating staff resources for evaluations? What training do staff have in understanding and interpreting evaluation results and making decisions? And then when students do qualify and need and are eligible for special education services, how are we writing really targeted, well-developed IEPs in order to really then where where those weaknesses are and bring them forward and constantly work towards closing those gaps? So that comes with district-wide training for conducting and interpreting evaluations and looking at adequate allocation of staff, so preschool and high school. We have really high, higher numbers right now for evaluations. And we're needing to look at how can we support those two areas. Also goes along with the professional development collaboration. It's really working with the administrator, administrators, the principals, coordinators, program leaders on special education instruction, regulations, and disability eligibility.
Do we have a best practice in the district around how soon we get IEPs to teachers before they're in the classroom teaching?
Do we have, like, before the school year starts?
It's like, at what point does the the teachers get the IEP so that they have time to sort of adjust it, ask questions, truly, really understand it?
So they should begin that before they have the students in front of them. Um, and then you have your ongoing consultation with the special education teacher and any related service providers that should be happening, whether it's in the IEP or not in the IEP, really to that collaboration basis to, on them working together. Specialized curriculum and training. So we really want to look at, you know, our areas of that we're having current identifications with specific learning disabilities, social, emotional, and health. So we want to look at what are our needs for ensuring that our students are making effective progress and really closing those opportunity, those, those achievement gaps. So identifying district needs for specialized curriculum and training, identifying progress monitoring assessment tools for writing student-centered IEPs and really aligning our IEPs with the Massachusetts frameworks for students with disabilities. We have a really, you know, at the elementary schools, we have a lot of, we have RTI for reading. We have a lot of progress monitoring assessments that we're using. How can we, for our students that need a more clinical and a deeper look at their level of progress? What are we using for those tools? That's really where we're, we're looking ahead. And then if students aren't making progress in RTI for reading and need something specialized, what training do our teachers have in in specialized reading instruction? What's their knowledge? And how can they be providing something that's even more explicit and systematic than what the students are getting through RTI? And I have exciting news to share about that because we were able to offer, so I I put it out there to see if anyone was interested in some intro to Norton Gillingham training, the course that's coming up. And I had a phenomenal response to that. So we have ten of our teachers that are starting an introduction to Norton Gillingham, it's an eight-week course, I believe. It starts tomorrow and we're fully funding it for them through special education grants. So they got their materials yesterday. They're actually working as a cohort together because there were so many. It's a, a woman who works in Manchester, Essex, that's running the training. She's certified. And because she had such a large number, she said, I think I'll take your group and we'll just work collaboratively together. So they're gonna get a really nice opportunity to work closely together and to learn together and then be able to bring that back to their schools.
Katie, can you, can you give us a thirty-second snapshot of what Norton Gilliam is?
Yes, I can. Thirty seconds. So when we think of specialized reading instruction,
Yeah.
it is explicit, systematic, multi-sensory, frequent repetition. Norton Gillingham is that umbrella term for specialized reading instruction. It's a way to teach reading. So it's not a, here's your box in your program that you're going to use to teach reading. It's, this is how students with disabilities learn. They learn through multi-sensory. Here's the tools, here's where you focus in and teach them your multi-sensory approach. Here's where you start and here's where you repeat and repeat. So it really takes reading and it breaks it down. Reading, learning how to read is not a natural process for everybody. So Norton Gillingham is just that overall umbrella. Within Norton Gillingham, we have programs. Wilson is a program that uses Norton Gillingham methodology. Spire is another program that uses the methodology. So there's different programs. But it's so, I think it's so important for teachers to understand that whole big picture and then be able to really individualize lessons for students as to where they're at.
And part of that individualization is that you can use certain instruction for kids depending on disability they have or depending on the struggle they're having. And being able to identify that and then provide that specific type of instruction can really help them make make their, um, effective progress.
And is that, is that just at the elementary level? So it's at the elementary level, yes, right now. We do have at O'Malley and at high school, we have specialized teachers that are reading specialist certified. We don't necessarily have that for our specialized teachers at the elementary level. And they are so eager to learn and utilize new practices. So it's exciting. It's, um, special education teachers as well as there is a reading interventionist from that is also doing it. Okay, continuum of services. So when we think about where do we need to build and support, we see the percentages of our students that are in full inclusion placements. It's very high. So full inclusion program and planning, we need to focus in on that. Need to really look at how are we bringing the services to the students in the room? How are we using, how are our special education teachers really supporting the teachers and the students within that environment that they're in? So really, I just started to talk. So really, I I should have started it. Providing continuum of programs and services that are designed to meet the unique and individual needs of students within their neighborhood schools. So we do have programs within different buildings, but how do we increase the capacity and really support our students in their neighborhood schools, specifically in the area of reading and social, emotional learning? So, and I skipped over the first one. Increasing our capacity to provide additional inclusive programming within our integrated preschool program. And we talked, you asked a lot of questions about that at the the budget meeting and with our preschool, we really want to look at what are we offering families? How can we offer more options? How can we continue to make sure that our preschool really is integrated and our students are getting that access to peer models right from from the time they enter our schools? Um, streamlining the programs in order to make sure that in regards to instructional content methodologies, data collection, consultation, and inclusion opportunities. So with our student support centers at the elementary schools, they're all, they're all running slightly differently. So we want to really look at, and this is where the social, emotional learning, where it's such a large category of working with Amy Cam and the VCEAs, to really hone in on what are the specific methodologies and strategies? What are we teaching for our students with social, emotional difficulties in the student support centers? How are we consulting the teachers to really help them to make that progress? Um, and then our learning center. So we have seen, we have a learning center that starts at third grade. It ranges from partial to sub-separate. So we have noticed that we do have a need for students at the K to 2 levels, really, that aren't necessarily fitting into what's happening at their, they're not necessarily making the progress they need to make at their neighborhood schools. So we either need to increase their capacity to support them at their schools or look at how can we better support them? And our autism and life skills program. So this is really where building those inclusion opportunities. Having students learn from their peers is so powerful and having peers be accepting of students with unique abilities is is powerful as well. And then continue to strengthen our consultation and collaboration between special education and general education. So that's really how we move everything. Okay, and then when I talked about parent and family engagement, we are working on building a CPAC. So what is a CPAC? It's a special education parent advisory council. So every district is required to have a PAC or parent advisory council for first pack for special education. We did not have one when I started, I believe. The, okay, so.
Dormant for a year or so.
So Dormant and I, I said, we need to, I I reached out to the coordinators and teachers and said, who you have in your buildings that might be interested? Which which parents do you have that might be interested? Because we really want to work together with families. We really want to work together with supporting them and helping them to feel like it's a working environment and that they have resources and that they have other other parents that they can talk to. And it, and it's their voice. It's, we need the parent's voice in helping us to move our special education programs forward. What is it that they see they need for their students? So that is what a CPAC is, and we do have a CPAC president, Ida Shaker. So, and I want to say a great big thank you to Ida if you're watching. We have lots of really good things that we're looking to to build this year. And this is kind of what we've mapped out for our plan. So we're really trying to make our PAC, make the PAC visible right now with outreach, working on a brochure, working on getting information on the new website, bringing it up at IEP2 meetings, letting parents know that there is a resource. And then in developing informal and formal needs assessments. So looking forward at what do, what, what is the parent's voice? What are they saying that they need for supports? Current data that we looked at with with Amy Cam in, is that, is the social, emotional learning at the mental health? So that goes right along with the high population that we're seeing in that area, and that's really what the focus is. So we are having our kickoff. Amy has her, she has the April 6th community event featuring Kevin Hines. So, and there's going to be different tables and opportunities there. So that's when we're really gonna have our greet with brochures, signup sheets, really trying to build that and and get people to join us. And then we're working on planning out the meetings for next year. So this year we will have in the spring, we'll set up our annual required meeting, which is really on, um, regulations, special education law. Hopefully, we can be in person and, um, really get a good crowd in for that. So we're, we're hoping to get some interest on April 6th and then build from there.
Is that something that you consistently are involved in? Like, do you go to all the CPAC meetings?
I will, yes. Um, right now, it's myself, Ida, and Amy Cam.
Yes.
And we've been meeting regularly.
Okay.
And, but there are, there are some parents that work in the district that are interested in it as well. And they weren't sure if they were able to be part of it, um, like on the advisory committee. So I've been looking into that too. So, um, we're really looking to, yes, I want to work with parents and really support them and have them feel like we're together, to support it. So this is my final slide. And just kind of feeling like some may see the disabilities, but here in Gloucester, I feel like we see the possibilities. And I'm really excited for the work that we're going to do moving forward. I'm excited to be part of a community that already has such a strong foundation. That's all I have today.
I have a question about, like, um, what was mentioned about the, um, communication uptick, taking third place as of this year. I just wanted to maybe have a special, like, attention because of the mask mandates that have been in place. My own daughter has has that category where she has communication issues.
Yeah.
Seeing a stus therapist. And, um, you know, it's obviously difficult to to learn how to speak properly when all your peers have masks on. That's a worrying trend to me, the uptick in in the communication and, um, maybe the, um, similar thing with autism as well, so.
Just, yeah, I met with preschool, with the preschool team
Yeah.
yesterday, and we were just talking about the, what are we gonna see when we finally have the masks off with communication? And the impact we're gonna see for our younger students that that aren't able to see how we're forming our sounds.
Yeah.
It's a worry that preschool teachers.
Crucial developmental period for.
The preschool teachers have that worry.
I see similar trends in all the data for for their surrounding cities and comparable cities here as well.
Yeah.
Um, the majority of which have communication issues in that area. Yeah.
Other questions or anything I can clarify? I do, I did come up with more questions of my own in looking at this data, so I already starting to to.
I also had a great session this morning with all the principals and the leader team. And, you know, just sharing, Katie sharing her reflections and and what she learned apart. And again, the data you saw, and others were very rich for them as well, in terms of open questions. Just commend Katie for jumping in. She's been here for total six months, but learning a lot, learning very well, she's with so many people at many many levels and and just, I think, off to a great start in identifying areas for us to look, for us to continue to make progress on. You know, and really, really dig deeply into, and again, the combination of, um, general education for such education working away that just, it hasn't for, for, um, it it often doesn't in districts. But, you know, it is and will get better here, uh, as we go forward. So, thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Next item was the superintendent's report.
All right, let me just bring this up, and we've got a bunch of things to go over tonight. First, I'll start with a COVID update and give you some, like, typically do. Give you an update. Uh, this is the wave water testing results. As you can see, um, this is from last Friday, uh, lower, um, still. You see, there's a little bit of gap here between the bottom, you know, dot detector line and where we are. But that's a level that we are at sort of, um, in sort of mid-November about. That point, it can get a little bit lower, but it's certainly, um, a remarkable trend over the past, uh, about four, nearly four, maybe five weeks. So that's, that's one side of, um, good news. Another side of good news, we're down to 14 active, 14 active cases across our school right now. That is a gigantic shift from two weeks ago and, um, or and then, of course, a month ago. There is zero active cases among staff. So it is, um, this virus continues to surprise us in many ways, and this was, I think, one, one, one of the few times it was a good way, but this has shifted so quickly. It's a really big deal. You can see just how things have changed. We haven't seen 14 cases, uh, since November 10th, since the first week or so we can have on November. So, um, it really is sort of, um, uh, retreating pretty rapidly. Here are our student vaccination percentages. Um, and you can see, uh, still, you know, slight upticks, um, total across Isle of Man is 49% of folks vaccinated, uh, Tuto is 48%. O'Malley you see up by one percentage point, uh, CHS holding steady, uh, although we have seen, you know, an uptick still at, uh, 12 graders continuing to, uh, support, uh, to have the highest. I will say, West Parish does not have a 501% vaccination rate. That is barely 50%. My mistake, sorry about that. Um, so, um, I would want to go back to this slide because, you know, safely educating all students in our schools every day to maximize learning, address our students' full needs and support community and family needs. Considering all that's been going on, we've done a remarkable job this year, and it, and it can't go without saying, that's our, our staff, our educators, our operations staff, our transportation, food service staff, our families, our school leaders, really continuing to help make sure we are in school every single day and doing it safely. A lot of things have helped us with that. Certainly the effort of all our nurses, especially our staff, our principals. As I mentioned, everyone helping out. The vaccine requirement for staff has helped keep us safe and keep our our staff safe and healthy. Even when folks do get sick, this, the, it's, this is typically limited. The hard masking and the physical distancing has certainly produced transmission in our schools. Um, and then also, as as our families and staff do, they stay out of school when they're sick or they have symptoms. Um, all those things reduce transmission, and we have the results to show that. There's the transmission within our schools, even though they're in more haste than than ever before. The transmission in our schools has been very low. You know, 1% of of our pool testing every week is a positive, and less than 2% of our students who are close contacts in school through the 2% have become positive. Okay? That tells us that most of the contacts and transmissions happening outside of school. It's hard to nail down exact percentages, but but certainly, all the work that folks have been doing in so many different ways and all these layers has helped us quite a bit. That's, that's, just, it's been, it's been great. Going forward, as I mentioned, uh, two weeks ago, vaccinations must remain our highest priority. We will continue to educate our families and to make sure they're aware of when vaccinations are happening. In the community, we are working now with Gloucester Department of Health in school vaccination clinics. These will be just like our flu clinics we've always had or had for a very long time. And those will be able to give, um, first doses, second doses, and then also we're hoping for booster as well. Without doubt, that will be coming up in the next month or so. Nurse Leader Jeff Parko is working with the Department of Health to to get those organized and deals in the schools. And that's across, um, all schools K through 12. One of your update on our COVID, our in-at-home test, rapid test program, which launched last week with our staff. And just to remind everyone, all families, all staff can get a free rapid test to take home themselves every week. We are distributing the test tomorrow for all our students, that's for all our students who've signed up. And the tests are done at home on Fridays. We do the weekly testing, the pool, the in-school testing on Mondays and Tuesdays, and then so wait some days, wait some days, and then folks test on Fridays as well. So literally, all of our staff, all of our families, all of our students, I should say, can get, can get free tests twice a week, um, which is, uh, something that's never been available. So we're all just, we have our in-school testing or at-home testing and also systematic testing. So that is a, one of the layers that is not only staying, it's remaining, uh, it's getting stronger, actually. Uh, the possibility that, that will help families and staff know, if you ever have any doubts, to be sure that you are of the status of your, uh, students and staff at our schools. So in terms of registration, registration is very good. More than half of our staff have signed up to participate in the at-home testing. 409 folks have registered. Uh, last week, we gave out 383, uh, tests, uh, test kits for our staff, since then, more people have registered. Um, and the the full 409 will get, or more, will get their second group of tests next week. Uh, we give out, uh, a box, uh, every other week. The box has two tests in it. That's why, um, that's how we do it for students and staff. As I mentioned, tomorrow, uh, more than 1,000 students will receive their free test to take home and do on on, um, on Friday morning. And then, uh, since then, we've been, you know, just over total 1,040 students that are registered. Tomorrow also, uh, paper forms will go along as well, um, for folks to sign up. These have all been on registration, and tomorrow, the paper that'll be translated in three languages. Next step on this, this is just what I showed you last week, but just a, just a follow-up, and I've already said it already. Student test, uh, they get them distributed tomorrow, they take, they take them home. Those will be shared in the homeroom or here at the high school on A block. If students have, or staff, uh, have positive, uh, positive result, then they contact their school, which was the absence, but they'll also fill an online form out so we can track them. And then we now have a, our contact tracers are now the COVID case management team. Instead of nurses, secretaries, and principals calling families, that code, that case management team, it's, uh, one and a half people will work with all families to make sure, or staff, make sure they know when it's safe to return to school. We're taking all of, a whole lot of work off of our nurses, uh, principals, the school secretaries, and, uh, and making sure that that they can do more of their non-overdues, which is really why the guidance is worth. Any questions about the rapid testing before we get into masks, mask updates? So, uh, this presentation's gonna look much different until this morning at our 10:00 AM. There's some scandal.
Nothing.
That's just a title slide. There's a lot of news. I just want to remind folks where we've been, because there's actually quite a bit of confusion about the statewide mask mandate, okay? Just want to pause here and remind everybody listening, and of course, all of you, that this has been, we've been doing masking. It's a statewide mandate, okay? Even the school committee, except for in a specific case, the school committee could not have retracted that, okay? And then we're getting a lot of, uh, phone calls and emails over the last couple of weeks, asking us to, you to do that. You couldn't have, except for one, one, you know, narrow area. But just want to folks to understand that that was not your local decision, it was a statewide decision, statewide requirement for all students and staff to mask. The commissioner, as recently as January 10th, extended that until February 28th. Okay, that's where, that's how we've been living until this morning, 10 o'clock. I do want to say, when people, one question people had, just so you know, we don't want this, is we could, it's, if we had the opportunity to move away from the mask mandate that the state had set if the combined staff and student percentage of vaccinations in our schools was over 80%, okay? We have never reached that. We've been reporting student vaccinations the last four weeks and sharing that. But the combined percentage, even in Gloucester High, which is the highest, still has not reached the 80% threshold. So we've never been in the area, never had the possibility to, um, go down the route, uh, which the state allowed us to do, to to repeal the mask mandate, uh, because we're at that threshold, which has been open to you. But as of today, very importantly, Commissioner Riley announced the statewide mask requirement for all public schools. We lifted it on February 28th. There are a few pieces here for the committee to consider, um, and also also be aware of. First off, masks continue to be, the masks must continue to be worn on school buses, all transportation. That is a federal order, okay? That's something we can change, you can change. That's something we can change, you can change, or the state can change at this point. We have no understanding or no knowledge whether that's going to change it. I'm just aware of it, so I can't comment on that. The commissioner continues to support a layer approach, his communication, and that's the things I talked about. Prioritizing testing, for surely doing, prioritizing vaccinations, supporting those. This point, there's no changes or recommendations for distancing or for lunch, okay? And you just see the sign on that today, okay? So, but as he does strongly recommend, okay, and that's the language they're using, strongly recommend that mask wear continues in the following two situations. One, positive individuals, return for five, a five-day isolation. So, for example, I, someone tests, I test Friday morning. I'm negative, I'm out for five days. My symptoms are better. I can come back into school on the sixth day, okay? But at that point, it would be strongly recommended I continue to mask, okay? It's to stay the same, all right, for another five days, okay? And also, Desi is strongly recommending that unvaccinated individuals continue to mask, okay? Important piece here, and Desi said this, but I will reiterate this, is whatever committee decides, okay, we'll talk about that in a moment, there are going to be folks who want to continue to mask. That's okay, and it needs to be okay, right? We need to have a culture in Gloucester, because in, in other countries, in other places, folks, when they have a sick, they're sick or recovering from flu, a common cold, in this case, COVID, they actually have a norm of to wear a mask, because they know it helps others to keep safe. And they know also that they want to keep safe as well. So that will likely happen no matter what you decide, okay? And it's very important, we always want to accept and honor and recognize differences, okay? And this may be one going forward that exists in our schools, and it needs to be okay. Having said that, Gloucester School Committee, all of you, the, the, this city still has, the School Committee still has a mask policy in effect, okay? As you know, for all your policies to educate the public, your policy remains in effect until you take a vote to rescind them, okay? At this point, no School Committee meeting, you don't have a School Committee meeting scheduled for June ninth, February twenty-eighth. If you wanted to do that, as you know, as the public knows, instead of being to do so. So that's the update on masks as of today. I was hoping that you know no major changes from Desi for a few weeks, but I think a couple weeks went by. And so they, they, so I think this is a positive development. As I said last time, we're going to keep working towards, you know, normalcy and normalization. We're entering, you know, a new, a new sort of, an era, a new time in terms of, instead of like, you know, living with COVID, you know, life without COVID. Not without COVID, but sort of, you know, moving from like COVID running our lives, okay, which it has had for two years, to living with COVID. And those are going to be different things. So this is potentially another step. Happy to answer questions and then.
Yeah. Another question or more of a comment than kick off the discussion. I think it's welcome news, but keep in mind that this Board of Health met Thursday, and they decided to hold a special meeting this coming Friday, yeah, or tomorrow, because the next sewer bot, whatever they call it, is, thank you. The bio bot's supposed to have another round of testing on Friday. So they were originally, Friday was planned to take a vote to decide whether or not to rescind the previous order, which added a mask mandate in publicly accessible spaces. I called Joe Rosa and Max Sheng today to talk about, to find out what the, the deal was with the mask mandate in public buildings, City Hall, places like that. And at first it was announced that it was the mayor that you can do that. But after some research, it's like, no, no, actually, the Board of Health made that decision. So I asked them to revise their agenda to include that as a discussion item. So my suggestion in a chat with the chair today is we take no action until Friday, till after the vote is taken at the board Friday, and schedule something definitely before March second, which is our next schedule, first or second, right?
First and second.
We don't want to come to the twenty-eighth without action. So I think my suggestion is sometime next week, schedule a meeting and take a vote. And it could be a completely Zoom meeting for this purpose. One item on the agenda to talk about this.
Let's, it's not on our agenda tonight for action, so we will have to schedule another meeting. I think the thought is we would definitely want to digest the information. It's not on our agenda, so we can certainly ask questions tonight, and then we would take it up. And date next week that we can raise a bill.
So this is more a comment as well given this discussion is.
You might want to speak up just because the microphone.
Oh.
This is in the middle.
So just another question or comment is that if we are going to be specialist again, I would want Max Shank or someone from the Board of Health to be, you know, we are not public health professionals, so I would want to hear directly from a public health professional as we discuss, as we discuss this. And of course, that's not, that's not what we're elected to do.
I have a question to Greg, so the chair, to Greg. So knowing that the Board of Health does not have any jurisdiction over what's going on in the schools as far as the decisions for masks, I'm just respectfully asking, why, why would we wait for the Board of Health to make a determination before we discuss it? I'm just trying to understand, that's all, not, I'm just trying to understand.
I started discussing it. It's, it's, we can't vote based on.
Well, we can't vote tonight, no, I understand that.
So my suggestion is if we're, they're meeting tomorrow, let's say, Friday.
Friday, yeah.
So those, so schedule something tomorrow or Friday, we need forty-eight hours anyway.
Exactly.
So we might as well do something next week, half hour, hour, ten hours. But at least we'll have in hand what they discussed, their actual votes or votes. And we can, I have no problem asking, I'll plug in my camera, sorry, having Max appear on Zoom and/or Joe Rosa or somebody else from the board.
No, I was just trying to, to determine if you saw some sort of link other than just the timeline, that's all.
No, and the reason I, obvious, for obvious reasons, because having a special man, you can't vote tonight. We don't want to wait until after the twenty-eighth. People are jumping at the bit for a decision.
Yeah.
And we don't want to come in with the, the much after it's the ending, you know, without a real, an answer.
I get it. Thank you.
Through the chair, and we're not asking the Board of Health for anything. All we want is just feedback.
But yeah, I think Q and A is, is, is a valid thing to do. We're not experts in the field.
I just want to respond to that, just the previous committee, we, we never made any decisions in relation to COVID without feedback from our public health department. None of us have that background. And so it's, I think, a strength that, that we've continued to bring to the table to, to receive feedback from public health officials.
Right, and, and should they vote Friday to not rescind it, that says a lot. But like I said, regardless of how they vote, it makes sense to have them here for a special whenever it happens. Tell them to set aside five or ten hours to be available.
And who would be the representative?
Sorry?
Who would be the representative from the Board of Health?
Well, it would be up to them. I would start, well, obviously, Max is the Health Department, and then someone from the board, Joe's the chair, it's up to him, if he would like.
A doctor, Eamon?
Well, it's up to Joe, he's the chair, you know? He's the one that knows the science. So anyway, I don't have control over the board.
Yeah, I had to. I just want to get them a medical professional.
Any more questions for our superintendent? Because there are probably people that want to make comments. I just want to get through our questions first.
So I would also, as part of this discussion, want to hear from teachers and other staff in the building. So I don't know how we can get them to get that feedback, certainly in all communications, but it would be a big change to, for them, and I certainly would want to hear from them.
Can I understand, too, the, that one of the key things that was in the last slide from the, from the state today, the culture of acceptance. That's the big, you know, kind of the bully and why do you have the mascot? It's not a real act. So it'd be our part to make sure it's acceptable to protect yourself.
Yeah, I think the consistent message, message has to always be, we accept differences, and we certainly, probably encourage bad behavior as possible. So we have to, you know, there's messaging, I think. I mean, there's a lot to discuss next week, but there's a lot to assist to it, to make sure we're successful with whatever we do.
Do you want to be clear on a couple of things? You know, this is still in place. It's still in place at our schools. I understand that many folks and, you know, that's, you know, staff, families, students, you know, want it to end, and, and it will at some point. But for now, it remains in effect, and we need everyone's support in keeping it in effect. People can, certainly should make sure the committee and myself know where you stand, you know? That's A-OK. But we really need family support, as we ask them to support all of our schools, the school procedures, the school processes, to keep this one, support this one as well. Understanding that, you know, the committee's got to make a decision, will, you know, in a timely, literate manner. But, you know, it's challenging our schools for many reasons, because we're in the middle of pandemic. And to make it more challenging by pushing hard against this within the schools does not help us at this point, doesn't help that health or safety, culture or dynamics of our schools. So it's really important, I think, for the public to hear, and to hear from me, that we need your continued support on following all school rules and school policies, including this one, until there's actually taken on it.
So today we heard from the governor, and I didn't get to hear, I didn't get to actually see the announcement, I only saw bits and pieces of it when I Googled it off the bar, that he and Commissioner Riley made their decision based on health data, speaking to the Department of Health in Boston and to health experts. So that's how that decision came out today, because he did the work that we want to do here. My concern is, hearing this conversation, I would just ask the committee to consider that any decision we make regarding our mask policy, which obviously we'll have to amend or revoke or withdraw, whatever the word we want to use, I would ask that we put this on a timeline, so that by February twenty-eighth, when this date goes into effect, that we have had a response and given answer to our families, because I think there will be absolute chaos afterwards trying to manage that status if we don't make our decision by February twenty-eighth. I know with the February vacation coming up, that puts a little wrench into time. So I'm going to ask that we add quickly on this, so that by February twenty-eighth, we know what modifications or changes that are coming to the school district, and everyone's prepared for it.
Can I add to that? I think just as importantly, I think families and teachers need time to sort of talk about, like, if, if we were to make any changes to our mask mandate, to talk about the norms being different, right? Kids are going to need some time to sort of digest that and sort of think through that, oh, this might look different. And so I think to that point, it's important to think about that timeline, to respect families' ability to communicate this with their families and get their, their kids ready for any possible changes, if we so choose.
So I was going to suggest we meet next Wednesday. You know, we have building, we have seen a budget of finance next Wednesday at five. So I was going to suggest maybe we meet after that, if everybody is amenable to that date.
That's a sixteen, yes. So seven?
Yeah.
We looked at the agenda yesterday.
Hour and a half.
Yes, I guess not spread.
I'll just give you guys a little buffer, but if you want to try for six thirty?
Pizza?
Someone's buying a pizza, is it worth that?
I'd rather, I want to make this decision, so if Wednesday works, Wednesday.
No, 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 I just need.
Yeah, no. Starting. Yeah, I just, I think, I think this, our discussion is probably going to be lengthy. So I don't, I mean, I don't know that we need much time in between. I, I agree with Gary, I think it's probably going to be about an hour and a half, and we can make that happen. So that gives us a half hour to digest the things.
Get up, stretch your legs.
Yeah. So is there any other questions before?
So, well, I just want to make sure so that we know when this is posted, because Laura said she wanted to hear from teachers and staff. We got over fifty to sixty emails today from parents. We had some teachers and some nurses, and they were all pretty much in line with the same request. So are we having?
There are a couple.
Out of sixty, pretty much, they were. Yeah, there's a couple, but I didn't say all of them, don't get upset here. But are we having, are we having a public hearing on that day? And if we are, are these letters considered part of the public hearing? In other words, if we want to hear from teachers, and I understand, how, how are we hearing from everyone, instead of just having a night of just hearing from teachers? Like, will parents be able to speak as well? Are we advertising this as a public hearing as part of our meeting? I guess is my question. So it's a process question.
What is the role of the committee on that?
My opinion, I don't know if there's any for public hearing, that people are feeding us their opinions already, they have been, and in light of it, after the announcement, they came pass of purists. So I don't think there's going to be a shortage, even if we didn't ask for it. But if we make it clear, we're meeting next Wednesday at six thirty, what we said, please, staff, students, parents, you know, interested bystanders, send your information to the school committee by email address, you know?
That's what I was going to say. I want to encourage anyone watching, or I just want to encourage anyone who wants to have their voice heard, who is a Gloucester resident.
Yes.
Who lives and moves in this city and.
Or employee, or employee.
Or employee. Yes, or an employee, but people who are related to Gloucester specifically, to really send your, send your feedback to us, send your comments to us, it's schoolcommittee@glosterschools.com. And we, I think that it's important to hear from as many members of the committee as possible.
And so just to confirm, I didn't mean to cut anybody off, but.
Yeah, so I did say we were going, oh, go ahead.
To just to confirm, so you want Max here and somebody from the Board of Health?
I'm not sure.
In order.
Max, our board is the director.
Yeah.
Is our director. In the past, in the past committee, we had a time for here.
Okay. So then, and then obviously, we'll know, we'll hopefully know what happened at the meeting anyway, for, for the board. So, so Max, okay, we'll do that.
Kathy, did you say six thirty or seven?
Seven.
Seven.
Yeah, because we don't be enough first. That gives us a little leeway for time. Okay, so I did say we will accept comment tonight on this topic. And hopefully, people have learned from the presentation and where we're at. I guess we'll open it up for people who want to raise their hand and speak. And Grazia La Peoni, I've seen your hand for a while, so you are up first.
Hi, I just want to say thank you to you all for your efforts and hard work.
Grazia, can you give us your name and address, please? Thank you.
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Grazia La Peoni, Forest Cedarwood Road. And I'll start over. I just want to say thank you for all your tireless work. It must be exhausting, but I want to say especially thank you to Kathy and to Melissa for responding to every single one of my family members who emailed. Instead of taking to social media and generalizing, I felt a sense of appreciation, regardless what we stand for. I think it's huge to be recognized when you take the time and, you know, put the kids first. And I look forward to you guys using your leadership and your voices to make the right decision for our kids. It's time that we move forward. And that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience, for everybody for being here. Is there anybody else who would like to speak this evening? I do not see anybody. I wonder if we have had public comment.
First.
Oh, someone else? Okay. We have.
Lacy Alves.
Lacy Alves.
Hi, I'm Lacy Alves. I'm a fifth grade teacher at West Parish. And I, again, I want to just thank you guys for everything that you've done throughout this pandemic. And I just want to tell you, I'm just excited that we have some news to move forward. It's just been a long time. for everything that you've done throughout this pandemic. Um, and I just want to tell you, I'm just excited that we have some news to move forward. It's just been a long time. And I'm just, I I just, I almost get teary eyed thinking about what instruction will be like in my classroom with faces, um, to see the kids get excited, to see them collaborate with each other and share information with each other. Um, so when it happens, I'm just thrilled that um, we're kind of seeing the light at the end of this tunnel. And that's all I wanted to share with you.
Thank you very much. Next person is Carolyn Perrano.
Make sure you unmute.
Carolyn?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Address, please.
Hi, this is Carolyn Perrino, three sixty four Essex Ave in Gloucester. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. I also want to say thank you for all your support and work. I would really like to see this happen. These kids deserve to move on after two years. I guess I did have a big question, though. I heard there was maybe eight hundred folks who had COVID in our city. Are you considering the natural immunity also to vaccination statuses? Because I think that's pretty important with the facts from the CDC.
Are we considering natural immunity as part of being considered vaccines, right?
No, the 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 question that the the school board is asking to the data that the school is asking is the number of folks who are fully vaccinated, um, not immunized. If you want to ask the, you know, hall director or the board of health about this question, I think it's up to you, obviously. So in case you can hear me, the the data that we report and I report is based on uh, those students emphatically who've been vaccinated. So it's not that you asked a question of immunized, it's about vaccinated, so strictly vaccinations.
That answer, are you, are you okay with that answer?
Not really, but I guess if that's how you're doing it, I just think that um, natural immunity should come into play and I think it is important. I just want to see these kids without masks. It's been a long two years. My two kids have suffered a lot mentally with this and it's time to move on from this. We need kids to, you know, move on and have a sense of normalcy in their lives now. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Deanna Benjamin?
Hi, my name's Deanna Benjamin. Um, I live at fourteen Briarwood Court. I just wanted to touch base um, on something Sam said real quick. She had mentioned that she kind of wanted to give the children um, some time to adjust and we have to remember that our children two years ago got thrown into this and had no choice but to adjust to no school, adjust to masks. So I do think that they are resilient and that the children at this point in time understand everything to do with COVID. I think we're all pretty open with our children, um, you know, and they've seen everything. So I think that you guys should give the children an opportunity to speak, you know, at every age level, elementary, middle and high school. But I, you know, I think it's time and I think it should be the choice of the parents and the students. Thank you.
Can I clarify something? Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Just to, just to clarify my comment, my comment is in relation to getting to a decision sooner rather than later so that parents and children have time to adjust before the mask mandate is lifted on the twenty eighth. Just to clarify.
Okay, uh, anybody else? Okay, um, thank you, everybody, for your patience through um, and and waiting for us to have comment at this point in the meeting because I thought the presentation was important to um, hear from the superintendent first before we actually started taking comments because there's a lot of good useful information. I do think as a school district and as a committee and as a community, we need to continue to stress vaccinations because had we reached eighty percent prior now, we might have been having some interesting discussions prior now as well. So let's keep working on on those numbers because those were always help us keep ourselves safe. That's right, so. Okay. Is that the end of your?
So, uh, we also have the budget presentation. Yeah, that works.
Now is that the end of your superintendent's?
Oh, yes, that is, yes.
Okay, so do we have?
Oh, I, I, sorry, I got one more piece.
Okay.
Which is sharing with everybody. It's good to see that everyone's still on the line and no one's hung up yet because we're going to show you the new Gloucester website. A very big deal and is um, simple, straightforward. Uh, we have a great slideshow here which shows kids but also shows important announcements. There's a testing safe for park. We also have links to the, to the, oh, there's kids. That's nice to have kids on the website. We haven't had that before. And so just a few things, so welcome here. Obviously, a quick, um, there is our rapid testing at home. Click on that to get there, sign up. An easy link to our, our every minute website. Some really key, just obvious icons here for parents to get to the most sort of used and most clicked areas of the of the website, easy to get to. A uh, link to our, the East Gloucester Building Project. And that's it on the whole page, that's all, okay? We're performing with emission, everything under the sun. And and the good news is all the navigations up here and very clear our district and it has these different departments, our schools. We will be working over the next few months on revamping the school websites. Quick links, those are sort of the most common, those are like those icons below, the most commonly used areas, um, families, community, a whole bunch of things are, you know, registration and calendars and meals and payments and bus routes and school brains portal, health services, all sorts of things here. A page for students, which is all this sort of, uh, many of the tools they use in school. So if they want to get on clever login or Lexia, that's all there and our staff internet. The nice thing about, uh, there's a, there's a great school committee page, we're opening in a picture of all you up on. And has very easy access to, very easy access to um agendas, packets of minutes and archives as well as a policy manual, just show, show that to you. This is where your picture goes here because that is not anywhere in the Gloucester School. It's still, it's still a work in progress. Um, I did surprise our staff with this change today. It wasn't a great move on my part, but I was so excited to get it out there. Um, we did move some links around. We are Grant Harris has been gigantic in helping with this. It's been, I mean, just really just did, did no one's work. Um, on the homepage there, uh, it was his, he figured out how to have the moving water. Uh, we're hoping at some point to have a picture from the boulevard on on that page instead because that's just looks like it's a great blue yonder. But uh, it is still a work in progress. Um, there's some sections that are built yet. Uh, if folks, uh, you know, if it's our staff, if they have links they can't find, they can't, things they need, just make sure they reach out to to Grant or submit a work ticket. And the fifth most important piece is that the different sections or control box can be edited by different, different staff members. So whereas before the previous site, very few people actually had the access or even knowledge how to how to update it. Um, now we have the folks in different departments who can update it. So it will be more updated, more dataable and a little more dynamic. It's also just easier to find resources, so. That's one, one quick thing on a significant change. This is maybe a one or two year site and then we'll look into something that's even more professional too.
Is there a way, and I I haven't used it to know, um, so when you get to the school committee page, right? And you click on an agenda, say for tonight's meeting, is there a live link to go live on Zoom?
There is.
In other words, in other words, go to school committee, click, you're in our meeting.
On those P D, I don't know yet. I mean, we're, we're, we're still, it's still the same document posted before, it's not a different document. Okay, um, what we do have is here, the remote, the remote public meetings right on the, right, if you're looking here. Right on the same page, all the upcoming meeting schedule and our remote public meetings.
I'm just thinking of a quick join here.
It's different every single meeting. We'll look into see if we can figure it out.
But I noticed like on the city website, um, when you go to Zoom meetings, um, when you click on the agenda, there's a live link there to join.
Yeah.
So I wonder if we can copy that.
Yeah, let's, let's look into.
So it's not, it's not a link that's right there. You go into the agenda for that day.
Yeah.
And then click on it.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, you can give it up. You're a school committee member, too.
It would be, I think we may even be able to one up.
Yeah.
I think so.
So, by having a live link right here, okay?
Yeah, that would be better. Because I was looking for where school committee is, so you do have to do some searching. We should have a big button.
That's what I'm thinking.
And I'm asking, could we have any ability to we have access to changing it or?
No.
Where do you want?
There you go.
All right, then.
Yeah.
Maybe we can, we can, we can talk about that. It's school committee website would make sense that the school committee secretary perhaps has some access, yes.
Just keep adding on, I'm going to start a new job description.
Okay.
Can I, can I just say something?
Oh, yeah, of course.
I just want to thank you for prioritizing this, like this is a big deal and I want to thank Grant for, you know, spending all the time doing this. It's helpful on so many levels. I see parents on Facebook consistently asking like, where can I find this? Where can I find this? And I really hope that this helps to streamline the process. And simplify it.
It should, you know, and 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 ultimately a test is, you know, can people find a logical thing? Oh, I'm looking for this, can I find it, you know? And also, I mean, the search will be much better as well, okay? But that that'll be the test and then we'll learn about that, go along and, you know, keep on giving us feedback.
Yeah.
It's easy to change and we want to make sure it's user friendly and people can find things logically in a way with a few clicks.
Sure.
Great, thank you very much, Sam. Really appreciate that. Okay, um, the next, oh, yeah, sorry.
Do we have a motion to approve the, accept the superintendent's report? All right. Reina Ropelov, please.
Mr. Mideo.
Yes.
Ms. Friend.
Yes.
Mayra Verma.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Chairperson Glancy.
Yes.
And Mr. Rollin.
Yes.
All right, we will move on to um, the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget presentation.
Good. So, uh, I'll, I'll go through today, um, introductory on this, so the sort of process, calendar, that sort of thing. So the overarching priorities and and um intentions, uh, don't get into the financial section, which is about the different parts that make up the budget. I will conclude that with a bunch of summary of the increase we're expecting or no, not increase I'm recommending in this draft. We will talk a little about a few things that are still needing worked out. Um, and then I won't go through it, but you have an additional entry section in the report here. Let me just jump in here. Guiding principles for FY twenty-three budget development. So first and foremost, it's got to be connected to our priorities. You know that um, in the, through the B and F subcommittee, um, our, our schools and our major departments came forward and talked about their strengths and their priorities and how the work they're already doing and it's and will be doing to continue on with those priorities. That is the sort of basis of of our budget decisions. Linked to that is a plan for ongoing improvement we're developing now. Those are, you know, are are part and parcel. They're, they're, they're built together. Another piece is moderation of financial prudence. They're always a must in municipal budgeting. They need to be a must, especially as um, you know, with, and just big expenditures from COVID that that may or may not um, continue to be present. And so we have to be prudent. We have to look for moderate increases because we don't know, we still don't know what the future will bring. And we do expect that there'll be additional, there'll continue to be additional expenditures based on COVID. So what those are is that they always change. Uh, another area that we see affecting our budget for FY twenty-three is the great progress we made in terms of um, salary adjustments, um, that will help us with improving recruitment and retention of staff. And then the last piece is building a budget, you know, tied towards FY twenty-five. That's when all our major federal relief funds um, go away. And if we don't think about that now, work on that now, we will create a cliff that'll be very hard to recover from. And we don't want to do that. And that, that, we'll talk more about that, but that includes what perspective money on, how we're spending it and then how we're incorporating any of those expenditures into the operating budget over the next couple of years. So I'll talk about that in length and above. One thing that we had last year in my first year here and continues to cloud the budget process, that's with um, the directors of our departments, that's with our school principals, that's also with the city. So meeting with the city, understanding what the city's finances are, understanding what we can expect as an increase and making sure we live within that. We asked um, all of our departments and school principals, what are the strengths and priorities for your school department? What do you, what are you already doing to execute on those? What are you willing to, what do you need in order to execute on those and what are the things you're willing to let go? The, the, that last question is really based in the principle that we don't just keep doing things because we've been doing them. There's always assess them, are they still the right thing to be doing? And if not, can we let go of them? Uh, and that means changing practices, there might be changes in professional development, changes in support providing and sort of thing, changes in curriculum, things like that. Here's the budget planning calendar. You can see a bunch of steps. Um, we're in the third step right here. And the month by month, we get more and more detailed. The budget book is presented all through next, next week, next month, sorry. Then we move to the public, the more public process of it, which is the public hearing in April. That moves then towards the school committee approving the budget that we submitted to the mayor and city council. And then the city council has its own process in terms of approving, as it's approved, every department budget also approves the school, the school committee budget. And that returns to you um, for your final vote in the, in June. Towards the end of June. This is a different look at that, just to point out that we're at the greenest stripe here, which is my presentation, all of you, um, about the budget. So intended outcomes, a couple of things here. Um, I already mentioned closely aligning the budget with our strategic priorities. Allocating dollars for the good work that's already happening, continue the good work and then allow for sustainable growth. Building a budget allows for sustainable growth is first building it based on our ongoing improvement in student learning, engagement, instruction. It's also about shifting asset funds um, to either one-time expenses or off the, off the grant funded on the operating budget. And then also anticipating increases that we always can sort of rely on in a sense, which are our health, health insurance costs, they continue to go up. Our salary adjustments, we have to always plan for those and know what those are. And then um, build a budget based on what we know is coming in terms of those structural increases. Let me jump into some of the dollars here. Really, pretty much year to year, we expect big changes in certain categories. So health insurance increases, salary increases and adjustments, those are ups and downs, so we'll talk a little bit more. Retirements, typically we find some retirement savings, if someone retires at a higher salary, typically can replace them on a lower salary. On occasion, it's both positions of program expenses. Interestingly enough, this year of any, most of our new program expenses are really looking towards grant funding to fund those. So we'll talk about that more. But so for curriculum expenses, for example, for our in the science arts pilot at the elementary schools and our new math program at the elementary schools, we're actually using, um, we're actually funding the materials and resources for those um, through grant funding as opposed to adding it onto the operating budget. Which is a really good way of doing and a really good use of those grant funds, which are limited time only. And of course, that investment is sort of uh, sort of one or two year investment. And then also uh, certification costs, including additional tuition, transportation, replacing our students. Those always fluctuate, basically typically go up, but also depend on a role that we talked about earlier, because of certification role that. So in terms of, um, so I'll go through some of these one by one. So we'll start with employee health and dental insurance. Typically goes up, um, it's, it's a typically a pretty significant portion of our annual increase from the city. This year, you see a three hundred forty-four thousand dollar increase. These are just for employees. If, and and you see that the, the cost of our budget for this expense, so out of forty four million dollars and change, six million dollars of that is, is health and dental insurance. That's not the whole story because you also have an employee of, and and retired. That's not the whole story, because you also have an employee, uh, and, and retired, uh, employees, uh, insurance costs. So the total, I think, um, projected cost for health and, health insurance for all employees and retired is six point eight million dollars next year. That's a total increase of three point nine, three hundred nine five thousand dollars, almost four thousand dollars over this current year. That's a five point eight percent increase that we project at this point. This may change as we get further on and they accept the GIC number, but this is a number that, that we've also checked with the city. And that's a number they said is a, is a good estimate at this point. You can see historically, this is kind of on the low end, okay? You know, we see sort of this, this, these higher ones of seven, eight percent. And then a number of years of the sort of high, you know, five percent, almost six percent is where we are. So that seems like a, a good projection. But it's a significant part of our budget and is every year.
Can I make a comment to the health insurance before you run?
Sure.
So yesterday we learned that, um, balance is no longer gonna be part of the GIC as of July first. And that's one of the lowest, um, cost health insurance. So I'm just keep in mind, I'm curious how the shift from that is gonna be. They're not replacing it with another lower cost one. So the plans available are the ones that are available now minus down. So we just have to keep that in mind too, because that might've been a pretty popular.
Yeah.
Selection.
Yep, yep. So looking at that, I just said.
So that could increase it a little bit more based on whoever rates it.
Yeah, brand, brand new news, as you said.
Yeah.
Pardon at this point, no impact. But just as, that's another example of why this likely is the change.
Yeah.
You know, sometimes it goes up from our earlier projections. Here sometimes it goes down, but it will change. We should expect it to. And as Gary likes to say, you know, this is part of this, this is a budget process. This is not, you know, set in stone at this point, and our budget is not set in stone at this point in terms of recommendation, and this is one of the reasons. Thanks. So we also made, um, as we know, have reached agreement on almost all of our, um, of all our labor unions. In terms of professional staff and some, uh, really our educators, so our principal, that's our, our professionals and our teachers. Have really gone toward limiting to bottom steps. So that's increasing our starting wages, helping to attract more folks, um, for the island. Increasing our education reimbursement as well. We've shortened the number of years needed to reach the top salary and also significantly increased coaching, athletic, athletic coaching pay. That, that increase in athletic coaching pay is really sort of, um, making our, our coaches pay much more comparable throughout the districts. It was a little bit, it was quite a bit lower and had not had an increase in quite some time. And so we, we bumped up significantly to get it there. All of these things, and then here on our operations support staff, a similar approach. Again, wanna increase our starting salaries. As folks know, uh, it's now even more difficult to, uh, attract staff across many, many sectors of communication. So try to increase wages at starting salaries and a similar, similar approach here in terms of um, allowing folks to get to, um, the top salary quicker. That does have an impact, um, as always does in terms of our, you know, the vast majority of our annual budget is, uh, are, are a cost for salaries as it is in most, most organizations. The total cost, um, for increases in, in teacher compensation, uh, was just a hundred million dollars from last year to FY twenty-three. Not a, I mean, that's a, you know, what, what'd be helpful, Gary, to show how that increase compares to previous years. You'll see that's in line. So that's sort of about salaries there. But I will say this, uh, the committee, you've been doing this work, so you know it well, um, has done a really great job. Especially supporting, um, our non-recoverable salaries or support staff, our operations staff in terms of making their, uh, salary much more competitive. Doing within the budget, doing it reasonably, doing it fairly, but also making some significant adjustments to help our staff. It's not a small thing. It's a really great thing to be able to do within our budget if we can. Any questions? As you folks know, um, ESSR funding, so that's, that's the federal relief funding. ESSR two and ESSR three, two different grants, two different amounts of money, um, significant dollars here. We have been, last year, uh, shared with you and, and you've got approval, you, there were positions that we've added. These are all officially added through ESSR. Of course, we've added also cleaning and filters and nursing costs or, you know, COVID costs. Instructional, uh, supplies, materials, curriculum materials. So, but these are just positions, okay, that we're funding through these federal grants. Um, as I said before, any positions of these that we wanted to be, have long-term, we need to get them on the operating budget. So here is a three-year plan to get these on the operating budget. Uh, we're starting with the top, top four. I'll talk about those in, in a moment. But you can see at this point, take on more in FY twenty-four and then the last remains on FY twenty-five. It's not necessary that we'll keep all of these. We wanna make sure that we continue to have the need and then maybe we keep them in case that's, that's the situation. We talked about these four, which are the first four. These four are doing one of two things really. At least one of the things, of two things. First of all, they're getting us quite a bit more capacity, leadership capacity and support capacity to coordinate really important services, um, across the district, okay? That mental health coordinator is Amy Cam. She presented you last, last week. That is a, as you, as I think was pretty obvious, a central position to have at this point. For all the support that she's providing across our schools, to our staff, so they can better support other staff and support students. So that was the, the number one priority to get, to get that off of grant funding, uh, the operating budget, okay? Similarly, the GHS, uh, HHS Special Education Administrator, that's Lisa Williams. We elevated her last year from Special Education Program Leader to the coordinator position, um, so she can oversee all of special education work, work very, very closely with Katie. And provide additional support and supervision for specialty education teachers and staff, but also really oversee the addition replacements as well. And substantially separate programs. And that coordination is already bringing benefits in terms of support, supervision and helping our staff to, um, you know, do their work. Transportation manager also, again, improving coordination for operations staff, adding redundancy so that, so we can, we are running a safer operation. An operation that can look into things like the seventy transportation to, to reduce costs. So again, a key position, which is, um, you know, really making that operation, um, stronger, safer, um, and more sustainable. And then, um, the last one, mainly adjustment counselor, this and anyways, district mental health coordinator. Supporting our social emotional support, particularly the middle school where we have, um, significant needs and, and have been sort of understaffed some of the year. Those of this were taken on the operating. Those are really the primary new, I'd say, you know, new positions on the operating budget. There are new positions who've been grant funding them, uh, but those are the ones we're adding to the operating budget. Limited to those. Addition, addition tuition costs, so often a driver of increases in district budgets. We anticipate next, next year, we'll have fifty-three students in addition placements, uh, per cost of just over four million dollars. These placements are made on an individual basis, uh, with a team approach, a team process approach. That is, um, determined, um, by state law, state and federal law that we need to follow. It is typically a process done with families, an extensive, um, sort of evaluation of our students to make sure that the, um, when we aren't able to educate them in a way that will help them make a better progress. For a limited number of students, we need to look for placements outside our district. You saw it tonight. Now, even though our total special education students is at a higher number than, uh, other districts, our number of district students is lower than, than, um, our comparisons. Which I think is, is a great strength. Uh, addition tuition here, um, you can see that really been ki- ki- keeping pretty steady on, on total number of students. You know, I don't see much, much difference between four, nine, fifty-three. Um, that isn't a growth. That's really stasis here and that's a solid, good solid number. We also, as you can see, you know, these costs can vary quite a bit depending on the needs and placement of the student, where they're placed, what their needs are. But you can see also, um, keeping a pretty steady number, uh, year to year, um, since FY nineteen. Addition tuition budget, um, you see we're anticipating a small decrease, but that is tied to a reimbursement circuit breaker. Uh, circuit breaker is the, um, funding from the state that reimburses us for, um, significant costs beyond the sort of typical student average. I'm sure Gary or, uh, or, or Katie, if you wanna add anything to this. Piece, piece I wanna highlight, Gary, um, one thing I might highlight, uh, that, that for the new members is typically we're able to, we've been in a pattern, the second row here, prepaid tuition of paying in advance for added for tuition costs, um, uh, from one fiscal year to the next. And we can prepay those tuition costs and we're allowed to do, and we do it. And probably the reason we're doing this is because we've been doing it for a while. And if we don't do it, then those costs have got to still be paid, um, in an, in an upcoming fiscal year, okay? If you don't pay them. Maybe this is where you should take over. We, we, we have to pay them, okay? If we stop paying them in, in, in this existing fiscal year, then we get a double payment the next year, okay? Which would really, um, cause, uh, significant issues in our budget. But it's ultimately, um, we stopped there. Anything to add, Gary?
Yeah, I just wanna add the, uh, the tuition contingency of five hundred thousand. That's in case there's, uh, move-ins or student needs to be placed currently in the district, but has to move out to, uh, to receive better services outside the district. And so that contingency is there in case our cost increase.
We have very limited number of contingencies i- in our budget. This is one of them. Addition, addition, addition to nations is another one. I mean, this school committee contingency was a really good incentive. But as Gary says, and this is a very common practice for specification tuition and transportation contingency. Most districts do it because as Gary said and Katie contested, they will, um, it's just, it varies year to year. And we are, can be on the hook for, um, for next year, um, for students are placed later this spring. Students who come from other districts and are placed here later this spring. So, and, and, uh, smaller students can have a very high, high level of cost. So it's basically good prudent budgeting to prepare just in case. We're going circuit breaker. Um, don't need to go too deeply into circuit breaker right now. But, and I don't wanna go through the calculations here, but what you should know is that it's one of the pieces of this, uh, district budgets that there's been quite a bit of consternation and advocacy around state reimbursement. It's probably been the point of sort of biggest contention. And the result of many years of active advocacy has resulted in the state now giving us, um, higher reimbursements for that, especially for transportation. The state pays up to seventy-five percent of the costs that exceed the threshold. That's four times the state average foundation budget, you know, per pupil, okay? That means that if we have costs above forty-seven thousand dollars per student, which is special, we have special needs, that the state will reimburse us for those costs above the threshold. They will give reimbursement for seventy-five percent of those costs that are above forty-seven million dollars, okay? That amounts to us, for us to be one point five million dollars, um, for next year, which is, um, and we work very hard to make sure we are, we are submitting and then recouping those dollars. And it's really, uh, a reporting function. If we don't report that well, we won't get that reimbursement.
Yeah. So I was just doing, again, as you said, Ben, I don't wanna get too much into this right now, but it, it is kind of interesting just doing the math on it and I'm like, so we got fifty-three students out of, out of district. Spent over, little over four million dollars. And am I correct in stating that the circuit breaker, the state pays up to seventy-five percent of that? Or, so I did the math on that. That comes up to like seventy-six thousand dollars a kid or whatever it is for a student. And, but the state's picking up a certain percentage of that. Is that, is that?
They're thinking, you know, if, so, so this, that average, okay? And just so you know, the addition tuition students can, can vary really widely.
Right.
So you can, you can vary to well over, you know, that, that, you know, seventy-five thousand dollar or well below that. I mean, it's really a big, big span.
Right.
But what's key here is on this slide right here is that we'll get reimbursed. So for example, if, if a tuition costs seventy-nine thousand dollars, we will only get reimbursed for the amount that's above forty-seven three.
So we're paying forty-seven three regardless.
Exactly.
Unless it's less of a cost for tuition.
Unless, sorry.
Unless it's less of a number than.
Yeah.
Yes. So if it was above that, we, we pay the forty-seven, then after that, we pay twenty-five percent of that.
Yep.
Okay. Is that?
That, that clarifies, definitely. It makes sense to me.
You said trying to explain the circuit breaker, you went to nine o'clock. It's not.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I think every year, I mean, you know, like re-explain this, so.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
All right. Just one last circuit breaker thing for Gary, but I know there've been years where the money, the circuit breaker money has been delayed or placements come on time. How's that been going? Like, does the circuit breaker money come?
Yeah, the, uh, circuit break, I, can you go back to that one slide you?
That was?
Yeah. So look at the, uh, prior year underlined and folded. So that means that our claims are the prior year and we're getting the, the funds in the current year.
Right.
So if we have a new student.
Right.
We have to wait an entire year before we receive any funding.
But are they still coming for the previous? I mean, are they coming on time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I just remember hearing that there were some issues around that.
They've been good on, on paying on time.
Okay.
Yeah. One of the key points I just wanted to mention was the prior year.
Yeah.
So they're on the books, even though we're not really getting anything. Getting anything to the next year.
To the next year.
Even within that number, there's three, there's a lot of moving pieces.
Yeah.
There's students that we are able to pull back in within the district and then there's other students that go out. So that, that number is not always the same students or always the same.
And I work with Katie, you know, we, we talk every week and to see how the changes occur.
They're constantly.
Yeah. And in, in terms of that, circuit break, Rosalie Ferrari is, is a huge piece of this in terms of keeping these two connected. But also, you know, really, I mean, like I mentioned, the tracking record, keeping the report enough to get the circuit breaker reimbursement is crucial. Rosen plays a big role in that.
Yep.
Yep. The last piece, and again, this is, you know, high level math, but is, another big change is that the, and this is because advocacy of school committees and others, is that they've increased and now reimbursing for, uh, out of district transportation costs, okay? This probably is even more complicated, but the important piece is that, um, for next year, the fifty percent eligible costs for transportation are being reimbursed. Then FY twenty-four will be seventy-five percent eligible costs, and then FY twenty-five, a hundred percent. Now, the key thing turn there's eligible costs, not all costs, eligible costs, okay? And eligible costs again are a percentage of that. But it helps, helps quite a bit, you know, and, and, and then we talk, talk about, this is transportation for out of district transportation is an area, a certain area that's going up quite, you know, quite, uh, quickly. Um, there, there are less, um, less, uh, companies involved in it. And so Congress is going down while the need is going up in many places. And so that of course means that supply is going down and demand's going up, that prices go up as well. So it's one of the reasons that we'll start looking, uh, with BNF next, next week uh, in more detail at the, um, dollars and cents around us taking on some of our district transportation. It's even, it makes finance, makes sense financially for us to do that.
Yep.
Yep. And then you can see circuit breaker, breaker funding. So, um, you know, this is, is this the reimbursement or this is what was incurred?
Reimbursement.
Yes. So this is the revenue we're getting, the reimbursement we're getting from the state. And as you can see, you know, growing. But it fluctuates year to year pretty significantly. And of course, that is of course based on the number of students and the level of tuition that we have above that threshold. Cause that fluctuates as well. Uh, in terms of significant adjustments to the budgets, so these are the major categories where we see adjustments. So, you know, now we didn't line them, line items, but some of the bigger players here. So the salary increases for teachers, as I said before, thirty-two thousand dollars. Support stock, staff salary increases, and that's across, you know, transportation, food services, uh, secretaries. Institute supervisors.
Fair professionals.
Fair professionals. So present development shift, so that's the shift downward. We're moving dollars over to ESSR because we're opening up dollars in ESSR, okay? We're also bringing those extra vision odds in operating budget, as, as I described earlier. We have our insurance crease in there, as we also mentioned. The decrease in the out of district tuition budget. And then also transferring some paraprofessional positions to grants as well. And some places, smaller reduction positions not through that we don't need anymore, those are happening through attrition, I believe. Those are things I summarized in the earlier slides, most of those. The upshot of that is a one point three five million dollar increase in the budget for for this, this we're recommending to you. An increase to the budget. We'll put that in some perspective here, actually, we'll look at, let me. Yeah, we'll get to that, what that means in terms of historically in a few slides. But these are the categories we've gone over earlier and just put some dollars to summarize on this table here. These are federal grants, so they're title grants you see down below, titled two, title one for low income grants, these are federal grants. The program for educational ones. The ones sort of from individual disabilities and below, so sort of halfway, by halfway and down are entitlement grants that we get every year from the federal government for different purposes. They're here for different sort of English learners for title three, professional loan for title two. Okay, you can see those aren't changing much. Can we anticipate those to change much? And if anything, they may go down a little bit, no. The the difference here is that we also a few different changes here. The earlier we see some increases with with ARPA money. And then we see a decline in some S R dollars, S R two, but a big increase in S R three. So those are the ones related to COVID. The ones we see increased are all related to COVID. The ones that are really staying the same are 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 sort of annual federal grants that we sort of get every. Budget by department, you'll see these if you think of across our whole budget. We're getting one point three five million dollar increase or recommending, well, I just, I should say. That's on the bottom line here, that's a two point nine six percent increase. So what I looked for here or what we look for is like which of these are much higher, much lower than that, than that average, you know, two point nine six percent increase. High school, that's simply some salary adjustments. So we saw an increase in teacher salaries and parent salaries, so they just have, you know, more staff there, we're getting those increases. This is also lane changes as well. We have salary lanes, and so we expect more salary lane change in the high school and those schools. Another one is transportation, as we mentioned, transportation is going to go up, that's the increase there, why it's, you know, that nine percent. The decrease in professional development is because we're moving some professional development costs under, under grants and off the operating. Athletics, the increase there is, we talked about already in terms of the increase in athletic pay, that's all athletic, you know, stipends. Which we, the committee very purposely increased at a pretty high rate. Well, here's the sort of draft, but summary. Going from forty-five to forty-six million dollars, the operating budget to forty-six point, this time forty-seven million dollars. A two point nine six percent increase. If we look at the past number of years, so listen, since FY twenty. You see FY sixteen, a level very similar what we're requesting now. Then FY seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, a little bit lower. And then really have been in the same ballpark since FY twenty in terms of percentage increase. And we'd always like to look again at our comparison districts. So these are again our garden neighborhood districts, just like the same comparison district we compared to earlier, early time specification. As you can see, we're sort of right in the middle there and very close to state average. That's where I think we want to continue to be. It isn't always about more and more dollars, it's really about what you're, you're doing with those dollars. I want to make one point here. We often focus a lot in school budgeting on on this number. The increase, I'm sorry, the increase. But as you can see, that's three percent of our budget. What really matters is how we're spending the other, how we're spending that, those dollars matters a lot for me at all. But what's more important is how we're spending the ninety-seven percent that we, that is there every year. And that's where we talk about, you know, the identification of the three primary areas that Kate talked about. How do you better evaluation assessment of our, of our special education students? How do you make sure they're getting the target intervention they need, target support they need? How do you do professional development? And how do you adjust the professional development, you know, from one area to next that Greg leads? So how do you make sure that we're doing curriculum review at elementary, we should be doing very well, but now at the middle school? Okay. And that's all the money that's in the ninety-seven percent. How do we help support our teachers to do a better, better job and our, all our staff? With better support, better training, better clarity, and that's for the better systems. So that's what I always like to talk about, is just like, it isn't just these dollars here, the the increase. It's really making sure we're doing the things to make sure all the money is spent well. A couple of places or a few places that we're still working on. We're still looking into it and considering possibility of supporting and trying to mail it. Considering possible schedule, schedule changes there. This be is look, working and looking on and will be working with our teacher team on that. Instruction technology, we'll be talking BNF next year. We have some significant, we have built a significant infrastructure on technology over the years. COVID really accelerated that in many ways, obviously. And something we've got to grapple with, wrestle with, plan out over multiple years. And want to make sure you're involved in that and aware of that. But the sort of annual operating cost of all of that have shifted quite a bit. We develop, for example, here tech labs for our different pension programs, revise programs. Those need to be, or three printing programs at the, at a mailing. Really great programs, but those come with replacement costs. Our Chromebook come with replacement costs. And while in the past, those could have been considered as sort of capital expenditures or equipment expenditures, they're becoming operational expenses. Because they need to be replaced on a timely basis or renewed on a timely basis. Or another area we have is software licenses. You know, we moved up towards a lot of software licenses and and those needs. In the past, when they were, can be considered sort of one-time purchases, at this point, they, they're sort of more on an annual basis. So those are shifts that have been happening and want to make sure that we're looking at them and want to make sure that you guys are aware of them. As you've talked before, English learners, just try to make sure we have the proper support or can allow for the proper support of our English learners. You know, during the school year, I'm going capital planning, we're doing with Michael in the Department of Works. And then another thing is curriculum instructional leadership. This is an area that really made the right choice last year to have a curriculum instructional coordinator at the middle school and looking at, do we need some leadership, additional leadership in some, in some areas, especially perhaps the high school. One other good example is as we roll out our ELA curriculum assess and review and pilot ELA curriculum at both the elementary and middle schools, you know, how do we make sure we do that well? That's a very significant investment, a significant change of practice and want to make sure we get it right. So again, areas we're looking at, and we'll come back to you with you know, what we're working on, thinking about and any changes we have to make because of these areas. We stop there, there's, there's other areas here for you to look at just more as appendices, but we pause there and and take a breath and see if folks have questions.
Yeah, I was just looking at the numbers for per people, it was seventeen thousand. Essentially, for the art district, my, my calculations was seventy-eight thousand.
Yeah.
That's, you know, fifty-three kids, but that's quite a significant difference. Is that because there are special challenges that they have?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, Katie can have more of this, but what what I'll talk about is, you know, education and supporting those kids to make sure they have a free and profitable education, you know, in least, least restricted environment for what their needs are. It's fairly guaranteed, you know? So it's, it's an important thing for us to realize that, you know, we have to support every and any child that walks in our public school with what their needs are, you know? And so more, some kids need, you know, but all kids need, you know, different supports and instructional, that sort of thing. Some kids need a whole lot more. But regardless of the cost, we're, we're out there to do that and we should so. But it does, it is striking, you know, those numbers are striking, they always are. But they're essential as well, for those to remember their families. Katie, anything to add?
I was just going to add, oftentimes those cost up higher because those are the programs that have a really high staff to student ratio. Because that's what's needed. They have additional therapeutic supports or related service providers to support in the areas that are needed within that school, whether it's medically fragile students that need more nurses or students that need more mental health supports or it's like it, it ranges, but there, it's very much when we send students out of district, it's very much high staff to student ratio and we're unable to tend to meet their needs here and they need that level of support. So and some, you know, we're able to bring some students back. So it's a moving, very much a moving.
Also, also because of transportation, it was called. I'm going to go back to one of your first slides, Ben, and I'm, I'm not, I'm only going back to it because I, it kind of stuck out to me a couple of times. And I've actually talked to a couple of school committee members about it, but you listed three things, what are your strengths and priorities? What do you need to, what do I execute and what are you willing to let go?
Yeah.
And so I thought, you know, we really haven't talked about what people are willing to let go. And so I kind of get to thinking, and being on the school committee for two months, I'm like, I don't see what you can let go, you know, I don't really see it. But I, and then a couple of committee members said, it's really, it's really in the details of the budget. You have to kind of get into the budget, kind of find those things. So I just kind of, just in a general sense, any comments on that? You know, what does that look like to you as far as what are you willing to let go?
Yeah, so a couple of things, like last year, last year, our program really, really great at this. You know, part of it, looking at their staffing, looking at, you know, paraprofessional spots, special education sometimes. You know, it could be, so that's, that's, there's just, sometimes you can even look at staff, okay? And that might be reallocating, you know, we haven't done this too much since I've been here, but one thing some, some folks will do is we haven't done it this year is, you have two paraprofessionals, but you, you could have a teacher instead. Okay, that's, that's, you know, you're letting go of a paraprofessional, so to speak, you know, quote unquote. But you're also then, you know, reallocating that to a teacher. Okay, and that can give you more flexibility in different services and support, both in scheduling and whole, whole different ways, okay? That's one way to let go of things. Another let go is a way of doing things. So what's something, we're, we're going to ask a whole lot of teachers, in fact, all of our elementary teachers to let go of the way they've been doing things in English and arts. Okay, to take on something that is quite different and what will be probably better for our students. We're engaging, we'll get them better prepared for middle school, that sort of thing. So it's what, like, practice and program letting go, then also maybe resource letting go. So another resource letting go could be some of an order expense on, I'll say textbooks, but you guys can help me out here if you want.
Great, you're doing fine.
You're letting go of a technology thing, you know? You don't need another screen or you don't, you don't need this sort of thing.
You don't need to make as many copies.
Right, right, you might be letting go, you know, you know, using less paper and that sort of thing. So so there's some letting goes there. But really what we want to get to is, and you, and listen, you know, I think we've been doing quite well here, you know, before I was here on assessing the quality of programs, especially the elementary schools, okay? And moving on from things, you know, towards, you know, like the math program. You know, for reading streets to the next thing we're going to, you know, select later this, this, this spring, you know? So I think there's actually been quite a good process of, you know, moving on from what, what's our, what's our three sixty place?
Numbers things, easy CPM was one of the things.
So these are some of our benchmark assessments, so so moving on from assessment tool that really wasn't doing what we wanted to, something that really is doing what we wanted to do. So that's, that's a letting go.
Right.
So it's, it can be, you know, it can be positions, you know, it can be programs, it can be practices, that sort of thing.
And it doesn't necessarily, to me, it doesn't necessarily have to have a financial piece of that puzzle. It could be something on the lines of programs. It's funny because I was, I almost asked Katie in her presentation, well, how do we evaluate, you know, in the special ed community? How do we evaluate, you know, new stuff? Or, you know, that's a constantly changing dynamic. There's new stuff coming on board, new, new techniques, new programs. You don't have to answer it now, but I'm, I guess what I'm saying is that you know, what are we doing to evaluate? And when we say let go, it doesn't necessarily mean financial, it could be for the betterment of what we're offering, I guess as well.
It's all about the, the positive student outcomes and looking at student growth. So we looked at some general data tonight, but looking at student growth more on an individual level with the assessments.
Yeah.
I, I've said this to Ben during the early process of the way he approaches the budget, just that framing of those conversations with his principals and department heads really gets them to examine what they're doing, not what they're spending, right? And and through that, you know, are they doing things that aren't having the outcome or the results or or whatever? So I think those conversations are all about, as he says, the ninety-seven percent of the budget, not what the industry. It's like, what are we doing and are we doing it the best we can? So I think it's a very reflective way to look at.
And you'll see, you'll really get a good look into our assessment of practices later in the spring when Greg brings forward the work that we've been doing late, late spring to late spring on assessing the ELA curriculum at the elementary schools.
Yeah.
And we'll be doing the same process, the middle school first, math, we're starting, or ELA, we're starting, and they were doing math, right? And you're really going to look at that, the in-depth work, teachers have been doing to pilot tutor programs, assess their value, prepare what we were doing before. You know, and and they're going to get a very robust process where they will essentially, you know, working on that, that decision with Greg's leadership. The good news is they're, both groups are really in, I would say, I'm not sure, Jordan, but like, are excited about the thing they're piloting.
Right.
Which, which makes me, we'll have a hard decision down the road, but that's a good decision to have to make, you know? Because they're excited about both, both groups, so you'll see in depth how that, how that works.
Yep. Appreciate, appreciate the answer.
All right, next steps on this are BNF, we'll get the budget book, the detailed budget book. At the next BNF meeting next week, we're going to give folks a little preview of what the budget book looks like as to so you can sort of see like what to expect in it, that there'll be hard sections, components. We might do that with the full committee maybe at some point, that's helpful, folks who are new. And then that is just, that'll be looking at the current budget to educate folks for a preview. And then that full budget book comes to you in your March, the BNF in March meeting. At that point, the whole community will have access to it as well. But as I said, especially in those last areas we're still working on, there may be adjustments and changes, we'll make sure that you're aware of those as we go along.
We will move on to the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school.
You want to do this?
Sure.
Thank you. I'll present it for you.
Okay.
Let's speak now, it's been quiet for a while.
I know.
Wait, oh, no, no, it's not, you can't see, you can't see what I'm showing you. Sorry.
That's fine. So next year's calendar is not, there's not a substantial change from a typical year where we have Labor Day weekend falling really in September. We start before Labor Day. And that's this sort of a standard beginning, twenty-ninth. Um, and that's, that's sort of a standard beginning, twenty-ninth is would be the first staff day, it was one day before school starts. And then, uh, we have a three-day week, uh, thirty, thirty-one, and, and one. Um, just a couple of details within that week, the, um. Kindergarten would go back to what we had done pre, pre-pandemic, which is, uh, screenings first couple of days, uh, followed by, uh. Half the, half the kindergarteners coming one day for a full day, and then the other half coming for next, and then a, a full start by September seventh for all kindergarten. These are things that we've done for a number of years and we're, we're back to. Um, the things really to take a look at that are different from, uh, typical calendar would be that, um, one, we're returning to, um. The, uh, election day, November eighth, or staff professional development day. Uh, we had moved it up into September this year, I'm not sure if you recall, because of the primary election.
Yeah.
Uh, it made sense to, um, move it up there and then, then take November eighth entirely off. Because we, you know, we didn't know what we'd be looking at for, for COVID at that time. Um, so we're back to that, uh, day, which is a, a traditional day. Um, and then the only other real difference from any past year would be that Friday, the twenty-third of December. Um, is often a half day for the last day, it's also where we have, uh, our tenants, it's really tough on a half day. Uh, shortly before the break, and with it falling on a Friday. Um, for the holidays, uh, to us, it made more sense to, uh, take that Friday entirely off. And make the Thursday a full day rather than a half day, which is typical to have a half day prior to the break, but just ends up. In many cases being a, a, a day that people take off, um, students have got, so. That Thursday would be a full day, Friday would be, the twenty-third would be off, uh, that adds one day to the break. Um, but it still allows us to have a projected last day, not including any snow days of June third. Which is still pretty good for, uh, for an end date in June. Um, other things remain essentially the same Friday, and with the February vacations and the April vacations falling on the standard holidays.
Yes. But, um, why is January second off as a Monday, it's not a holiday?
I believe there's a, either contractual that if it falls on a, um. Like the Monday after the first, I could pull up that language.
I think it also would be, we actually would be celebrating that, that holiday.
Yeah, the holiday's on a Sunday, so it would be. So we have that con, one contract, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
But, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be a national holiday.
Oh, because of the national holiday?
Because Su- Sunday the first.
So Monday will be the national holiday.
Is that right? Second will be a national holiday.
We'll get it too. I don't.
I think it gets.
You don't, no, so I don't believe it's a national holiday. We get, if a holiday is on a Sunday, we get a con day. I believe that's how it works. We don't, the Monday's not considered, I, I, as far as I remember, I don't think I ever thought it's all that good. But I, I do remember that it's gonna contract somewhere.
Yeah, I can't cite the exact language. Um, also just, generally speaking, I think it might make a good idea if, even if it weren't to have that Monday off with the first falling on that Sunday.
It's actually, I'm looking at the list of federal holidays, that January second will be federal holiday.
It will be?
Yeah. Yeah.
I only ask because we've had conversations in the past about how many days is unhealthy to be away from school, you know, so I was just adding up the total numbers.
Yeah, I think.
It's a holiday, it's a holiday.
I think we talked about that a lot, uh, when we were considering having two full weeks off, but this ends up being, um, just a weekend and two more weekends.
So it's like, it's one more day we had this, this, this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and this year was the shortest year ever, yeah, so, yeah.
I, I think the reentry of a four-day is good as well, and it's probably.
Yeah, that is true, especially in January.
Yeah.
Laura, I'm gonna look to you, because I don't, in programs, we had some conversations around simplifying and streamline, streamlining the kindergarten start dates. Um, and not separating them into two groups and really prioritizing getting them into school on the bus for all the older kids. And I, I do think there's some merit in having more conversations around making that feel a little less confusing, because it's.
Yeah, I, I understand that the principals really advocated hard for, for this, because we do have to fit in the screening.
Yeah.
So the alternative would be to get the, the, the kindergarteners in before, but we don't have that option because they, everybody else is starting. And they, and we have to do the screening. The half and half, um, the principals really feel strongly that that is very helpful for handling. Um. They, you know, what's challenging for, for students on their first full day is, is, it's hard to handle. And do that well for a class of twenty-two kids. And just to give them a really, really good experience with half the number. Understand that it's more confusing as a parent and we probably do a lot better job of, of clearly communicating, you know, group A, group B and, and.
Yeah.
And doing that, but you know, certainly we could have a representative from the elementary principals group, uh, come talk to us, but.
Yeah, or maybe it's, I think we even talked about like. Improving the orientation so that it includes transportation, or the first time the kids are, are getting on the bus isn't the first day of school, that kind of thing, like.
Yeah.
Just helping them orient in a, in a nicer way than just jumping on the bus with a whole bunch of force.
Yeah, I, I agree, I do it, I do think there's room for improvement in, in the orientations.
So, in, in one of our, um, meetings that Gary and I had with, uh, Lori Francis, Director's Director and Camera Locker Manager. Um, uh, raised this, you know, because, you know, they weren't here for the whole conversation, so they're very much aware and will continue to work on. Making sure that, um, that's, uh, improved. Um, you know, on, on a variety of levels that we talked about, so they're in the loop on that and, and we'll make sure that. Um, but one of them, one we talked about, I'm pretty sure. Well, we're, we're, some ideas on this is, is how do you encourage a transportation early on, so they get somewhere else, um, so it's not just what we've done at, um.
Talk about it with the principals.
I know, but we, we, kind of, because there's not, there's not, no, it, it, kind of the kindergarten, you have to get on and off the bus, it's sort of like a fun thing, right? So something that's more meaningful that and more, you know, related to how, how like it works, so. But that's, that's definitely, um, uh, top of mind.
Yeah.
Um, and aware of it, and, and Cameron and Lori are also as well, and, and then, as, 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 um, Katie was saying, you were saying that principals are also talking about.
We had, we had talked about adding that to the principals when we were planning for the transition, how to support the transition.
Yeah, and adding in a time for, for part of their time to be getting on and off the bus and practicing, going for the ride.
Yeah. And. And communication from the principals to each family, that, that whole process was so difficult last year, and so. I think it's also, I think it's a transportation issue, I think it's also like principals to, to the new families, you know, and, um. You know, just as much communication as we do from every angle from that, I think, could be helpful.
Good. Yeah, absolutely, we're, uh, not forgotten a bit about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure. Um, one thing was, suppose, suppose that, Chris, folks, why we get the Friday off before Labor Day weekend? It's nice to have a Friday weekend, I could be wrong, but that is in our GTA contract.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any other questions? Yeah, so the only thing I wanna bring up is, um, so we know we discuss it and consider it is the, uh, primary day, which is September sixth. Um, so I'm just curious, have the principals talked about any major disruption, I know, um. Well, have any of the principals talked about primary day being an, an issue with having school at the same time as people are having to devote?
At this point, I mean, it's never, you know, it's, it's, it's been reduced enough, so it's, it's at a veterans, it's at GHS. And, and I think three other schools.
So the veterans is going to?
West Parish.
It's not West Parish, um, the high school, they're gonna go to, um, St. Anne's?
No, no, they, they, I can't remember where they moved into, honestly, because they moved out of our schools, or they moved, or, or just to that high school, was it? But no, it's not that high school, it's gotta be within their district.
Yeah.
Oh, and that, it was veterans just at the Y last year.
Oh, right.
Yeah, yeah.
They were.
Yeah, that's, that arrangement still holds for, you know, this coming year.
And, and then particularly, you know, that. That primary day, you know, we don't expect, it's not, it's a high turnout primary day, you know? Because that, right, yeah, because of which year it is. So we're not that concerned about that impact, I think folks are more concerned about going to school later. Having those, they're starting off strong, so not having as many, you know, limiting it the best we can. Um, you know, uh, days off in September. So, um, particularly if it's a day off, it won't have such a big impact on, on schools, right? We just probably don't expect this primary to have that.
So what I was saying is that the high school, West Parish, and West Claster will still have people coming into the building, when school is in session.
Yeah.
Plum go.
Yeah, I mean, that, well, plumbing, plumbing was only because the community center during COVID needed, they needed more space.
Well, is that, wow, well, they forgot this, there's still multiple schools that can have it.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, what are we, what are we doing to sort of maintain safety during those times? I mean, that's, I think that was always the concern, and we got multiple emails from parents saying, you know, it's concerning to have people coming in and out. Of our buildings when our kids are there.
Um, they're well organized, they're well managed, they're separate from the students. I understand that folks are concerned about that, I wanna minimize that, but I can assure you that if our principals thought it was a, a significant security issue, they would let us know. And they don't believe that. So, I, I wanna minimize folks' concern, but, um, uh, it's not something that best concern does. Folks should run the building and respond for the safety of the total.
So, do they have any, uh? Some other comments on, I just, you know, when the last day of school is here this year?
Well, today you do.
Right.
Today, it's June twentieth. Um, because we, uh, the, the twenty, on. It's the Tuesday, because Monday is a holiday, so we, till, when, when, when we canceled school last Friday.
Right.
That moved us, we are already on a Friday, I don't know the date, sorry. Um, that moved us to a Monday, that's Monday, but Monday's a holiday, which will, we're on next, on Tuesday.
Isn't there a school that has to make every day and a half?
Uh, that's too weird.
Okay, anybody wanna make a motion to approve the calendar?
I made a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, last, last of the school go, second.
Right, anyone's question? The real call though?
Mr. Minion?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Berger?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Chairperson Glancy?
Yes.
And Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Uh, so now we will move on to subcommittee reports, and we have a program subcommittee report from, uh, Chairperson Laura Wilson.
So, I'll try not to make this a long meeting, but, um, so we had an extremely informative and interesting, uh, presentation from Attendance Works. Um, who is the president and the chief that we're working with for student and graduate issues here in Claster. Um, I sent everyone the presentation, um, there's a lot of information there. A couple of terms, chronic absenteeism, uh, is missing ten percent or more days per year, and that's eighteen days. Uh, in a one hundred and eighty-day school year. Um, Gloucester currently, um, this year is at thirty-six point one percent of our students are chronically absent. Um, which is, uh, quite a hot rate. Um, but we don't have a rate for this year from the state, but, uh, last year the rate was seventeen percent. Gloucesters was thirty-one, so we're looking at some issues. Um, they brought into this conversation and this presentation, why looking at absenteeism is so important. Um, one quote I wrote down is absenteeism is like a canary in the coal mine. It's the signal for when a student's, uh, achievement starts to, you know, it's, it's a signal of, of inequity in student achievement. Um, so, um, they brought, you know, they did a lot of research on Gloucester, Gloucester absenteeism rates. Um, and again, there's a lot of data here, one, um, one piece of data that I thought was incredibly important was looking at all the kids, um, in categories. So not only chronic absenteeism, but at-risk, uh, you know, from satisfactory up. Um, in our, in our kids in the at-risk category, kindergarten was the highest number of kids. Um, and that was quite striking to me as we sort of look at how we wanna dig into this, into this issue, we were obviously, um. Starting younger than, than I realized. Um, and that data is, is in here, um. They really pointed to the fact that attendance is, you know, attendance equals engagement, like if you're engaged in school and you're, um, feeling. Like you are seen and you're present, you're more likely to attend. Um, so much here. Um, basically, we looked at all of these numbers, they talked about sort of all the data that shows that. You know, what absenteeism means for student dropout rates, or, you know, lack of achievement, so seating levels, et cetera. Um, and so we're moving into the, so what do we, what now, what do we do now? Um. They looked, took a look at our, um, Gloucester Public Schools attendance policies. Um, and they feel that they're, they're misaligned for what the goals are of sort of effective engaging. Um, policies that will encourage kids to come to school versus being punitive. Right, please correct me.
No, you're doing great.
There was a lot, there's just a lot of data here, and it's almost ten o'clock, so. Um, so just a couple of bullet points that they gave us as we start to rethink our policies. Um. Um, they noticed that we have a focus on truancy instead of all absences. So one important point about chronic absences is that it's excused and unexcused, not just truancy. So they're saying that we, we are focusing quite a bit on truancy and not everything. Um, that our policies are compliance-driven and increasingly punitive with consequences versus having a problem-solving approach. Um, third was, we don't have provisions in our current policies for personalized outreach and engagement with students and families. Um, and they pointed to the attendance failure policy at the high school as contributing more students dropping out than them re-engaging. So it was, it was, there was a lot of meat there.
Yeah.
And, um, uh, we are planning to meet again on, on March tenth. Um, to start looking at the policies and seeing what we can start to do. One of the most, you know, so we had categories of what are, you know, there's barriers to attendance, there's all sorts of, you know, all sorts of barriers. Um, and I could, you mentioned some of those, illness, um, family issues, lack of transportation. Um, it, you know, there's so many, but one of the things they pointed out is that there's an average of nine barriers to attendance for kids who are, who aren't attending. So it, it's really about being holistic, this is, there's not just like one thing happening for most kids. There's a whole bunch of things that all come together, and as we wanna sort of, you know, build equity in our schools and give every kid an opportunity to learn. At the, at the, at their most, you know, positive and highest level, tackling this is a, is a huge issue for us. So we will have another presentation on March tenth, and, um, welcome to questions and everything to give to Attendance Works, you know, so that they, they can answer that. Because they are, they are moving Greg and Attendance Works. Because they're, they are moving, Greg and Attendance Works want us to move sort of quickly on this policy stuff so we're in place for next fall to really start sort of ramping up what we want to do. The policy, did it keep and build that?
Yeah, there is also an emphasis for the training staff as well, in that timeline being
Yeah.
difficult for us. And then doing that in a stepwise manner, I think, was what this suggestion was.
Yep.
Uh, two things that I, the main takeaway for me was to remove the barriers that keep kids from becoming engaged for us. And that, that's critical. The other thing that really stuck out, stuck out to me was the fact that even at the kindergarten level, if you get on that slippery slope, missing too much school, it extrapolates out of your public education experience. It's, 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 it was eye-opening. And the other thing I think is that, to keep in mind, it's excused, unexcused, and suspension. So unexcused can be everything from, hey, we're going to Disneyland for a week and a half, you know? It's kind of a big one.
But they showed a calendar about, you know, the way that, you know, you take off on one day, the first week in March. When they, you know, you have two days off every month, that adds up. You know, you're quickly at risk or beyond. And so it really changes, it changed for me the way I was looking at it.
Yeah, me too. And I'm looking forward to continuing to be involved in it.
Chair, I just have, when I was listening, one of the questions that stood out for me was around home visits. And as somebody who's done in-home family therapy, I feel like that is such an important approach to building relationships with families and sort of break down some of the barriers to communication. But they also said that the, the most important relationship between a family and the school is the teacher. And so I'm curious, and I'd like to know from Attendance Works, how, how they go about home visits? Is it the teachers that do the home visits? Is it school adjustment counselors? How does that sort of roll out and what kind of buy-in do they need from teachers? Because I'm assuming obviously that would require discussion and negotiations. I, I don't know, but that just seems like something that we would have to fly up with, with staff. So just realistically, what does that look like? Because I think it's really important, but what are the first steps?
Just to piggyback on the home visit issue, that kind of raises a red flag to me because, I mean, with attendance, it's not always the student's fault for not being at school. And if parents are making decisions and then you're sending an employee of the schools to someone's home by themselves to have a potential hostile conversation, that doesn't sit well with me. So I, I was just curious to hear at some point what safeguards are in place? If we have an employee going to a home to have a potentially difficult conversation in a family home? So I would just think about that as we move forward. I'm not saying it's, I, I understand the purpose of the home visit. I think it can be productive. But in my world, I see all kinds of concerns with that. So I just would just keep that in mind.
Potentially be putting them in a dangerous position, depending on what's going on in their house.
Exactly. Or what's there, who's there, as opposed to having them come to the school. If you can get them here. So I just, just keep that in your mind because I'm, I'm not one that would just say, oh, just go to a home visit without knowing the history and background of the family, if the conversation could get difficult.
The kindergarten information to me is very interesting because kindergarteners probably aren't the ones making it to school.
I think that was part of why it's been in books, you know, we talked about this when we talked about this before COVID. That this is going to need to be like a whole community, family sort of re-education. Because of course, kindergarten, we can go with anything, you know? And so this means like for families to be learning from pre-K, is how I see it. How important school is, how much, you know, if your child is missing days of school, they're not learning to read at the same level as their peers. You know, there's just really basic building blocks that are not happening. And I think that's going to be partly just a communication, not just, it's going to be largely a communication and engagement with families.
I think one of the, when Greg was the elementary principal a long time ago, the tardiness issue was a big issue. And I remember, you know, the back-to-school meeting and, and, you know, giving the example, imagine if you're the kid walking in, you know, you're the seven, six-year-old and you're walking into your classroom late. You know, I just think there's just so many powerful ways to kind of reach families that, particularly of families.
Do we file CRAs here? All right, well, let, let it's, back on, tune in March 10th.
Yeah.
Same bad time, same bad channel.
Okay.
That can reference.
All right, uh, there was a personnel meeting, but it was executive session, so there's no report of that. Okay, so we have, we're moving on to action. And it looks like we have some very wonderful grants from Gloucester Education Foundation. Without objection, shall we take them together? Okay, we need to accept grants from Gloucester Education Foundation for $2,500 to the Elementary Theater at Cayman School, $2,500 to Elementary Theater at East Gloucester School, $20,000 to O'Malley Academy to support the after-school and summer programming, $4,000 to agricultural people, agriculture people and the environment to support grade six through eight with established partner factory growers, $4,813.25 to the Gloucester High School AP Environmental Science Program, $6,000 to support grade five and six families, students, staff, and partners in June 2022 for transition events. And the last one is $10,000 to STEM equipment, and that would be at Gloucester High School, I believe.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, all right. Any questions? Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Yeah, excellent. Thank you. Uh, okay, so we need a roll call vote, right?
Mr. Minia?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Ms. Berga?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yeah.
Chairperson Glancy?
Yes.
And Mr. Sharon?
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Just showing off that beautiful one. A little bit more.
There's a point to this, I promise.
Okay, um, then we'll move on to the discussion and other communication and all the new business. Update on the East Gloucester Veterans Memorial School Building.
So we do it up there on that. We have cool visitors up there on that. And you can get to them by our new website, which we may have heard about tonight. Scroll down on our, on our branded web homepage, there's a nice link to the East Gloucester Veterans Building Project website. And you'll notice that there's new video on that website.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, and, and we're going to give you hopefully a sound work here. Okay. Yeah?
Ben, Chris, and Stick, Sonic, Prince, L T R, Orange, man. That's on the big dog. Nice.
Nice.
Cool. It's okay if you want to get more confident on everything that's happening. We're standing here at the new elementary school.
Looking at the quarters.
Will be in the cafeteria. Wonderful place to welcome new elementary school. All right, so we are nearly inside of the building tomorrow. And shaking, the concrete is almost endless. We are making a decision today. We're almost ready to do the building, so they're all ready. Now you can see how tall the hill will be, about how tall the building will be. Where's the beach you're going on now? I'm in the chicken wing. First grade on the first floor, second and third on the second floor, and fourth and fifth, well, you can talk to the building. Go on.
I did drag by today.
I did too.
Nice to see it. Nice to see it on a vertical.
Look at that, in the snow.
That's great. I mean, I thought that was not.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Sharon.
So with that, there is a meeting tomorrow at 5:00, February 10th, 5:00. One of the items on the agenda is discussing and having the committee vote on the guaranteed maximum price agreement with the contractor. So.
Can it be on budget and on time, on schedule, I should say? Just the actually important part about the steel going up is the steel deliveries, okay? And, and those are, you know, one of the advantages of this site is that literally you take it right off the highway.
Yeah.
Or right with 120 feet, or right with another 120 feet and you're in, you're in the, on the, on the construction site. You know, typically you're going through upland neighborhoods, you know, for a longer period of time. And they're also staged, and so, so one of the important pieces is minimize the impact on the, on Webster, what's your street? What's your road? I'm sorry. And, and what is, doing that is, is the team is doing it is not to have those deliveries backed up on, on the street. The way they're, they're preventing that, they're actually staging them at the Beverly rest stop, you know, Shell station out there. And they're queuing up there, when they have to do deliveries, they'll stop there. They won't have any more than two trucks come and deliver, so they actually pull right onto the site. So they don't, they don't actually pause on Webster Street. Yeah, so that's a good thing. And, and that's the biggest, I mean, there's, there's obviously noise during, during the day. You heard some bit on the video. But, you know, the real impact on a neighborhood is when you have trucks coming through, lining up, blocking traffic. And so they're doing a nice job of preventing that. They also put out the project team, put out to the, on the, on the webs, the web, the email address we do have to the folks, because they would know this is happening, started on Monday. And also Dennis, Dennis BCD, who's the project manager, the onsite project manager, has a good relationship with folks in, in the neighborhood. And when they have questions, they know to come to him. And also his name and kind of information is right there on the, on the website as well. So he's, he's been quiet at work and connected with members of, of the neighborhood. So, and always open to talking things to the, with the folks there, so. So one last thing is tomorrow, the, we will get an update on all the different sort of checks and balances. At that point, it's not quite the right word, all checks and balances that the owner, project manager, and the construction, construction teams do to ensure, you know, quality as you go along. They have different checks along the way, you know, when they're pouring concrete, they have outside company to verify the quality of it. And they're going to give us more information on how they do that, the due process they have to make sure that, that's a high quality and high execution.
All right. Anybody else have any new business they want to propose? Or does everybody have enough, right? It's a very good meeting, excellent meeting, a lot of really good information.
Second.
The, we got.
Minia?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Ms. Berga?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Chairperson Glancy?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Good night, everyone. Thank you for everybody that stayed in with us. Thank you for attending our meeting. Thank you, Mr. Sharon.